Wow, that was way easier than I thought.
They're just excited to get going.
Yes, welcome everyone to the October 22nd, 2024 City Council Meeting for Placerville. Will you all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Clarici.
Here.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Here.
Mayor Noe.
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to ceremonial matters. Item 3.1, A Proclamation commemorating Pierre Rivas's combined 22 years of faithful service to the city of Placerville. And I've been informed that it's actually 23 and a half.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Did he want to add a number where?
Yes, yes, exactly. And I'm going to read this, and they made the writing as small as possible as to adhere to the one-page thing, so here we go. Whereas, while working as a principal planner for El Dorado County, Pierre was appointed and as a planning commissioner for the city of Placerville in 1999, and was an active member who shared his rich knowledge and expertise with other commissioners and the public. And whereas, as a Placerville resident at the time, with a unique love for the city, Pierre decided to begin his political career and run for city council, and he was elected to by Placerville voters in 2002. And whereas, Pierre was re-elected for a second term in 2006, and served as a distinguished council member, being appointed as mayor in both 2006 and 2010. And whereas, the city thrived under Pierre's leadership and accomplished many milestones, including constructing a new aquatic center, a new city hall, the Highway 50 operations project, a $45 million upgrade to the water recollection facility, and celebrating the city sesquennial incorporation anniversary. And whereas, Pierre was instrumental in hiring of Cleve Morris, city manager, helping the city navigate the negative effects of the Great Recession and the passage of Measure H sales tax. And whereas, while serving on the city council, Pierre reached new heights while subiting Mount Kilimanjaro in Tanzania in 2007. And whereas, a few years after serving his second term on the city council, the director of development services became vacant, and Pierre was appointed as the new director in 2013. And whereas, Pierre instills a strong customer service culture in the department and has a key member of the city's administrative team by providing invaluable wisdom and guidance in grappling with citywide issues. And whereas, under Pierre's servant leadership, the city implemented its first code enforcement division, went live with a new online budget permit software, saw the successful development of Sutter Ridge subdivision, Apple Farm Place shopping center improvements, secured over $3 million in state and federal grants for the Mallard and Middletown apartment projects, which are currently under construction. And whereas, after 23 and a half years of combined service to the city, Pierre will enjoy more time in the great outdoors, traveling and creating new memories. Now therefore, I, Jackie Noe, by the virtue of the authority invested in me as mayor of the city of Placerville, state of California, do hereby commend Pierre Rivas on his 23 and a half years of combined faithful service to the city, and declare Friday, November 1st, as Pierre Rivas Day.
Whoa.
Okay. Now, I understand Pierre has a couple of stories he'd like to share with us.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council, and colleagues. So I do have some stories I want to tell, because this is probably not going to get this sort of a chance again. Well, maybe on Friday, on the next Friday, November the 8th. But anyways, yeah, it has been a very, very long career for me. In fact, I can't believe that it's over. I enjoyed every minute of it, every minute of it, at least, well, almost every minute of it. So my, my public service started many years ago with Kern County. I worked there for, with Kern County and their planning department. And then I moved up to El Dorado County, accepting a position with, with the Development Services Department, and I worked with El Dorado County for 23 and a half years before coming to the city of Placerville. And I worked here at the city of Placerville now, combined, for 23 and a half years. So that's four years on the planning commission, eight years on the city council, and almost 11 and a half years as a staff person. So down to some of the stories. So the first story I want to just tell you about a mentor. She was my boss in the early 1990s, and it was a very exciting time for me, because I was a, still a relatively young person in my career, and I was, I was working in the El Dorado County General Plan Update. And Craven Alcott, the late Craven Alcott, was my mentor. In fact, she acted like a big sister to me. And she always told me, if you ever get a chance in your career, work for a small city. So I always had that in the back of my head, because I always seemed like I'm sort of a county guy. So the next story is, how did I get involved with, with the city? How did, why is a county planner then seeking a position on the city planning commission? Well, I just bought my first house over at Cloma and B Street in 1992. And so I was out, always working in the yard and different things like that. And, and I can't remember if she was the mayor at the time, but she was on the city council, and that's Kathy Lishman, and her husband Steve would walk by my house. So I, we started to chat, and so I'd see them every so often, and she got to learn about me, and that I worked for the county, and to say, you know, you should be, you should be on the, on the city planning commission. So she hounded me, and she hounded me for, for a number of years, and I kept saying, well, no, you know, I'm, I'm single, I'm still a, you know, a rambling man with things to do, and I don't want to tie myself up with too much serious business. So, but after a while, I did relent, and I did seek an appointment, and I was appointed to the Placerville Planning Commission in 1999. And that was just a fantastic experience. I got to, you know, serve way back when with planning commissioner Mark Akuna, you know, for instance. So, you know, and that's another wonderful thing about working in a community like this, is I've known and worked with some of these people for 30 years plus. So I did my four years, and then after doing the four years on the planning commission, people were saying, you should run for council. Oh, no. That's where I draw the line, and I'm not a politician, and I especially don't want to drive around town and see my signs on everybody's lawn. And so I was hounded, and so I did. I ran, did the sign thing, and I'd drive around going like this. I didn't like seeing the signs. But the most fun I had running for office was going door-to-door and talking to the residents. I really felt, wow, this is a small community. People would invite me into their house for dinner. They'd invite, oh, come here, we're just having a drink, join us. It was actually a wonderful experience, running for office. But I, that first time I ran, I lost. So my committee said, you got to run again. And so, oh, no. So again, I'm hemming and hawing, I don't want to run again, and do that whole thing again with the signs and stuff. But I'd enjoy going door-to-door and meeting with the, with the public again. So I did, and then I did get on the city council. And then the second go-around was easy, because it was just, your signs just say, re-elect. For some reason, that's just a shoe-in. So, so I did the second term. So it was, it was a, it was a real, it was really incredible experience being up there in the council. So I know what it's like to be in your shoes, and it's extremely difficult. And I appreciate all that you do, because you're close to the voters, unlike what's happening at the state and the federal government and all that stuff, where everybody's trying to get rich. You're not, you're trying to improve this community, and I'm, I'm very proud of that fact, that I, you know, have known and I've served with so many of you in different capacities. So, and I do want to talk a little bit about Kilimanjaro. So Mayor Jackie Noe was a part of the Kilimanjaro team. Twelve of us made that climb in 2007, and she was instrumental in being one of the planners, the main planners of that event. I can't believe it was that long ago, 2007.
Seventeen years ago.
Seventeen years ago, and sometimes it seems like just yesterday. So that's the Kilimanjaro story. So also, when I was in my last term, I, I had the ability to serve on the council when they hired the new city manager. And so Cleve Morris, our current city manager, was appointed to the position, and I'm, I'm very happy and proud that I was instrumental in making that happen. And Mr. Morris returned the favor. So later on, he sought, you know, sought me out and go, maybe you should apply for this development services director that's now open. Thank you, Cleve. I am in your debt. Let's see, what else? So I have a Jack Sweeney story to tell, and that's why you see this hat. So when I was serving on, and I can't remember if I was serving on the, on the planning commissioner, on the city council, but supervisor Jack Sweeney would always come up to me and say, he'd go, what hat are you wearing? Who are you representing? City or the county? So towards the end of my career at El Dorado County, at one of the board of supervisors meeting, supervisor Sweeney presented me with this hat, where on one side it says "City of Placerville," on the other side it says "El Dorado County." So I'm still with the city, so it'll be the city of Placerville that, that I'll wear facing forward. But I tell you what, I want to be buried with this hat. Let's see, well, I guess just to say, public service is, is a calling. It is something that, you know, there's, it's a calling, and I'm very, very proud to have been in public service all these years. Because I, I have worked in private service. I mean, I worked for Ogil Petroleum, an oil company in Santa Barbara, I worked for United Parcel Service. So I've worked in other positions as well in the private sector, but there's nothing like public service, when you're doing the public good, and you're trying to make the community a better place. And I am so happy to have had that opportunity to do that. It's just been an honor to serve, serve with all of you, and the public, my colleagues. Everybody here, everybody knows me, so. But thank you. It's been an honor.
The honor is all ours to have had you for that many years. It's just, we are so lucky with all the knowledge you've shared with us, with all the humor you bring to every meeting, and I've learned so much from you and really appreciate that. We're not going to do tears tonight. Would anyone else like to get up from the public and make a comment about Pierre? I'd welcome you to do that now.
Pierre, I didn't want you to be embarrassed that nobody was getting up, so I decided I should. But that was funny, that, the way that Pierre and I met, and the fact that often someone needs more than one encouragement to do something that they should be doing and where they belong. And for a long time, he worked for the county, and he was in planning commission or city council, and that hat is perfect. But Pierre and I go way back, and there was a time when he helped in the Orkut Garden, that's now weeds and an Orkut and a Goldbug Park sign, and we have the funding to fix up the garden now. But before Caltrans took that out, Pierre used to volunteer, and so I'm hoping when he retires that he'll volunteer again. Also, when my youngest son Nate graduated from Sierra Nevada College in land use planning, environmental policy he graduated with, he got to be an intern in Pierre's department with Pierre and Andrew, and it was a wonderful experience. They actually let him write staff reports and give presentations to the planning commission, so it was a great experience for him, and he went on to Amador County, and then he went on, he's a senior planner at PG&E. And Pierre, I was trying to think of something else that he had done, but... So when he retires, I know he wants to work in his yard, but he's going to, he doesn't know this, but he's going to come over to my house, and I'll get a pizza, and he'll bring a bottle of wine, and we'll sit and watch the city council meetings. Thank you.
Good evening, Kristen Becker. I'm a Placerville resident. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I feel compelled because it's Pierre. Pierre, I just wanted to say, early in my career with El Dorado County, and I had never worked in the public sector, so I really didn't know how to navigate the public sector or the county, I got the opportunity to work with Pierre pretty early in my career. And I just wanted to say, Pierre, that I learned so much from you, and that you are always so responsive, so knowledgeable, kind, helpful, fun to work with, and so much more. And you really have impacted me personally and professionally, and we've bonded personally over Bass Lake and some good lots there, as well as Raw County, and I look forward to continuing our friendship after your retirement. Thanks, Pierre.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mark Akuna, citizen of Placerville and former councilmember and former mayor. One of Pierre's famous lines was, "Once a mayor, always a mayor," isn't that right? We've shared that many, many times. I would just like to thank him for his years of service. It was great, his, his little presentation this evening, Pierre as a rambling man. That's a, that's quite an image. We're going to carry that on in November. So, but it's very true, he's, he was always very concerned that as the council or planning commissioners, that we presented ourselves, we were representing the city, we were doing the people's work. And there was many a time that I would get a friendly email that he'd remind me that, well, now, councilmembers should wear a shirt and tie. Probably maybe don't need a jacket tonight, but we all want to look presentable up there. And he is absolutely right. And through his era, we had a real dress code, and it was, we were doing the people's work. People had appointed us to run their city for them at that level. And so that just goes to speak to his spirit and his energy that he brought to all of his years. And the Jack Sweeney hat, that was great. I'm glad to see that he's taken good care of that, because it was quite a hoop the day they presented that to him. But I just want to say, thank you, Pierre, for, again, people probably don't remember, but it was through Mr. Rivas's tenacity that we survived one of the most tenuous city council meetings that I was ever a part of, and that was the water and sewer rate increases. We had several police officers there at the building, we had to rent the auditorium at the Seventh-day Adventist Church to hold the public, and Pierre made sure that every single person slash ratepayer from the city was allowed to speak that night. And I think we went well close to midnight to hear those folks. And he was absolutely right, it was our duty to allow those individuals to speak. But, and yeah, those rates did go up, and yeah, they do hurt, but guess what? That's a part of why we have a much more resilient system in the ground now, far more reliable, because he encourages us to do the hard things, and spend our time, and do the people's work. So thank you, I know you guys have a long meeting, good night. Thanks.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll bring it back to the council. Any comments from the council members?
Hi there. I'm sorry, I'm not wearing a tie. I am not going to be at the gala party, so just a series of events with an old college buddy of mine compel me to be somewhere else. Pierre and I do go way back. I actually worked for the El Dorado County Transportation Commission, and we were housed in Building C with the planning department, and you might have either been across the hall or down the hall. He had an office, I had a cubicle. And the one thing that I will, I mean, for a variety of reasons, which I won't get into, but I have always considered Pierre a very good and close friend. His service to this community has already been talked about, and will be talked about more, and I don't need to go over that. He was an early supporter of Clarici for city council. If you happen to be very lucky, you could have one of my vintage signs from like 1994. And he still has it, I think, and he threatens to bring it out every once in a while. I don't even know if my mother kept one, and so I've, I've always felt very fond of Pierre for that. He's a good man with a good soul, and, and with the right interest in things, which in any community is important, but certainly in a small one like this one is, especially since we frequently, as we'll talk about for the next while, don't always have all the resources together, and all the money we need, and everything else. But when you have people of good conscience and, and good souls, and smart, it makes all the difference. They will do the extra thing, they will go the extra mile to make sure that things are done right. I work a lot in rural California for other governments, and one of the challenges is, they don't get, they don't get the best representation. And when you have people like Pierre and the other people in this room, you should take a long look at the people at these long desks and thank them very much, because they all represent this city to the highest level possible. We have staff that are far better. Once again, I spent a lot of time in other governments. Our staff is far superior to just about everybody I run into. And you should never forget that, especially if you live in this city, you should never forget that. And Pierre's kind of been a leader in that sort of thing, you know, the keeping those standards high. And it serves us all very well. So anyway, oh, and you can actually lose an election with the word "re" on your sign. Trust me, it does, I'm not bitter. It only, it only hurts every day when I wake up in the morning, but, but anyway, not the point. It's, this isn't about me. Thank you, Pierre, thank you for being you, and I'm sure I'll see you at whatever the gym is called now, UFC? Yeah, that's the place. I'll, I'll see you around. And, and since I won't be here on Friday, my wife is actually going, Yvette is going to the party, and everybody likes her better anyway, so it's really, she'll, people will like that.
Great, we'll have fun with that.
Yeah, yeah, she'll have fun, yeah, with, now, no, you'd have to listen to this for... I am taking Pierre out to dinner, and we're going to drink and tell lies to each other, and that'll be a lot of fun. That's the kind of thing friends do for each other. So anyway, congratulations, Pierre, and thank you very much.
Pierre, I think the first time I met you was actually at The Wine Smith, and it was like those, those great Friday nights when Kay Delang still owned, owned The Wine Smith, and I think that's where I met a lot of Placerville, when I, when we first moved to town, you know, 20 years ago. And, you know, talking to you, one of the reasons why I got interested in even, you know, serving the city, was just listening to the work that you did, what you were doing, you know, when I first, the Historical Advisory Committee back in, whenever that was, 2012 or '13, I think right, right about the time you were coming in, so. You're my, you were my neighbor as well, you're just a couple of houses down from me, and I've always appreciated your outlook on the work that we do, because as you said, you were a council member, and so I think you've always had a unique position in the sense that you've sat here, you've been down there, you've been in the, in the crowd as well. And so you really had, you know, a 360 vision of how, you know, when you had important projects or important things coming for us, you know, how to distill those things so that everybody could really understand it and, and put that, put that information forward. And I've always appreciated that, because I think it's been helpful to us too, because you know the decisions that we have to make, you've been in that situation before, and so it just gave you, I think, a unique perspective in all the work that you've done, and, you know, what John says, absolutely right. I, I put you and our staff up against any other city in California. I get to work with a lot of them as well, in counties, and, and like I always say, we're the little, the little city that could. And, and we do a great job, and Pierre, you've been a big part of that for all these years, and so I just want to thank you. I'm looking forward to the party as well, and, you know, hanging out, so, you know, we'll go do lunch, I'll have you come over, we'll raid, you know, wine out of my, out of the cellar, and, you know, we'll have a great time. So again, thank you for everything that you've done for the city. I know it's been a labor of love for you as well, and we're going to really miss you in this position, so thanks.
I would just say, I first met Pierre when I was appointed to the planning commission a few years ago, which was my first foray into public service. And I, I appreciate sort of the questions, and I know I'm super analytical and can get in the weeds sometimes, so I really appreciate Pierre, you know, taking the time to answer questions and to go over those kind of fine details with me. So thank you very much for that, and thank you for your service to the city.
Okay. Well, I'll just tell you, Pierre doesn't hesitate at everything, because when Mike and Judy Palmer came to me and said, hey, we want to invite the mayor on our hiking trip, I was like, all right, we'll check that guy out, see what he's got. He's got a lot. And it's been a pleasure to both play outside and, and get to know him as a regular person as well as work with you. And I'm not going to say you're going to be missed, because I'm going to still call you, and I'm still going to see you, and we're going to rook you into a whole bunch of projects you don't know about yet, so this is not the end. All right. With that, we will move on to item 3.2, which is a proclamation commemorating Veterans' Day 2024, which I am not going to read tonight, but I will read on Veterans' Day at the county building. Moves us to item four, closed session report. City Attorney Abrahimi.
Thank you, Mayor Noe. The council did meet in closed session, there was no public comments in advance of that, and there's no reportable action.
Thank you. Okay, item five, adoption of the agenda.
I'll move the agenda. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Passes unanimously. Brings us to item six, brief comments by the city council. We will start with Councilmember Gottberg.
I have none tonight.
Vice Mayor?
I have none tonight.
Councilmember Yarborough?
I have none tonight.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Just one, I know because it's a long meeting, so by the time we get to our boards and stuff, people may be gone or not paying attention. Just wanted to highlight from Secog, so Triptide Green is back on the priority project li... well, it wasn't on the pri... never was on the priority, priority project list at Secog, it is now, which is a huge development. We had put in, the city and EDCTC had put in a $19 million request prior, we didn't make it. This time we, we are in, so there'll be a re, there will be a resubmital of that, hopefully. I'm pretty sure we will, we will do that. But it's, it is a huge undertaking, you know, we're now a part of that six-county funding, and so I really want to thank Supervisor Thomas, as well as Woody DeLoria, who was the head of the staff working group on this. I think without their work on the six-county working groups, you know, we would have been maybe not in the same position. So I really want to thank them for their hard work on that, bringing this project forward. It's a huge potential game changer for our area. I don't think we'll get a full $19 million, but we could potentially get significant funding resources to make, to make that project a reality. So just wanted to put that out there on the front before, before, not that I'd forget, but there tends to be less people towards the end of a meeting, so there you go. Thank, that's it.
Thank you. It will be brief as well. On October 9th, I went to Walk the School Day, that's always a fun day with the kids. On the 10th, I went to the homecoming parade, got to ride in the car, fun stuff. Saved the Graves this past Saturday, always a great event, and that's what I have. We will move on to item 6.2, receive and file a presentation by Pioneer Community Energy about the services they provide... a presentation by Pioneer Community Energy about the services they provide to ratepayers. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and maybe I should have had Councilman Yarborough introduce, but I can do that. I wanted to introduce Gina Strazi-Vannicor. Did I say that right? Who will do this presentation on their new program they are bringing to Eldorado County, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council, for having me here tonight and for the opportunity to present information to you. My name is Gina Stassi-Vannicor. I'm the Director of Communications for Pioneer Community Energy, and during the past few months, we have been rolling out some programs for our customers that we are really excited about, and I'd like to share some information about those programs with you tonight. As a reminder, Pioneer Community Energy is a not-for-profit provider of electricity. We are an alternative to Pacific Gas and Electric on the generation portion of customers' utility bills. To date, we have saved customers more than $85 million, and we are committed to reinvesting those savings into the communities that we serve and to the customers that have our service. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Yarborough, who serves on our board. He provides tremendous leadership for us and has been instrumental in helping us get some of these programs moving forward. Programs are somewhat new to Pioneer in 2024. We began launching earlier this year. The programs are really intended to provide added value to our customers and to create additional ways for customers to save money, but also for Pioneer to partner in the communities that we serve. A few examples of the programs that we've launched this year are discount LED lighting programs, which allowed us to partner with local retailers throughout our service area. The HVAC tune-up rebate was simply a $75 rebate for customers who had their air conditioner serviced. Power Shift Rewards helps to educate customers and then incentivizes them to reduce usage when the grid is stressed. And the one that we are really excited about and to explain a little bit more about tonight is our GridGen program, which is a rooftop solar plus battery storage customers, or a program for our residential customers. So we'll get a little bit more into that right now. So, GridGen is for residential customers throughout our service territory. As a reminder, that's Eldorado and Plaster Counties, Grass Valley in Nevada City. It is a three-way partnership with Pioneer, Tesla, and Participate Energy. It offers rooftop solar systems and battery storage with no upfront costs and no credit check. And we are really pleased to offer this program because it allows customers who think solar may be a little bit out of their reach or believe they may not be able to afford it, an opportunity to get in the game. So, how it works, for Pioneer customers right now, Pioneer buys the electricity, we put it on the grid, the grid sends it, then the grid sends it through PG&E's lines and poles, and then PG&E bills customers for that transmission and delivery. With GridGen, customers can generate their own energy, which then they use at their own homes. Any additional energy is, instead of being exported to the grid, is stored in a Tesla battery system. It can be used when the sun is down, during peak hours, or when the power is out. What GridGen is really intended to do is to help reduce the transmission and delivery charges on customers' energy bill, and those generally represent more than 60% of the bill. So, again, that just explains, instead of, usually Pioneer procures the energy, and the majority of the charges are placed on the customer bill. This slide is, looks a little complicated, but it's not. It goes through three different daytime scenarios to help show how this program works. So, homes with solar, or homes without solar, excuse me, pull energy from the grid, and they pay higher rates during the peak hours. The same is true for solar customers with no battery. For GridGen customers, they can use the energy that they store in the Tesla battery, and it's really important to know, for customers to know that they are still connected to the grid. For example, if they need additional energy, they can still draw that from the grid. But the goal of this program really is to protect customers from high-energy bills and to insulate them from the impacts of power outages. In the event of a power outage, GridGen customers have the batteries that can power essential load, like medical equipment, refrigerators, water heaters. In protracted outages, the rooftop solar can still power the batteries, so for customers, they get higher, greater stability and higher rates of resiliency. Just, again, a quick summary of the benefits of this program, and just so you know, when we're talking about the battery, which is sometimes called a power wall, that white box in the lower right corner in the photo is what the power wall would look like. Again, there, it's zero down, no upfront costs. GridGen is intended to create increased resiliency and stability. It gives greater access to solar and industry-leading Tesla battery technology for customers for the long term. There is, it comes with a 25-year lease. Customers pay for the, pay on that lease through their utility bill. There is a low escalator. Therefore, customers also are protected from long-term rate increases, and we do believe that PG&E will continue to increase its rates over time. It's easy to transfer it to homebuyers in the event that a property is sold, and then the PPA, the Power Purchase Agreement, is between Participate and Pioneer, so we are involved in that process. To provide a little bit of comparative information, and again, this is representative only, an average customer with no solar using 7,800 kilowatts annually would still have Pioneer buy the power on their behalf. That power would serve their home. They would pay for that power at the regular rate, and they would pay for the transmission and delivery of that power through PG&E, and again, 67% of their bill. A GridGen customer using the same house, same amount of power, powers, generates power for their own home. Pioneer buys the power that the home produces instead of looking at other power sources for that home, and customers then avoid PG&E's delivery costs. So, in terms of dollars and cents, our research shows that the estimated, this shows the estimated savings with 3%, 5%, or 7% over the life of the program, which again is 25 years. For larger homes, often have higher usage. If you use more energy, you actually save more money. I do draw your attention to that yellow highlight. A lot of homes do choose, larger homes do choose to use a second battery, and that works. For smaller homes, there's still, the theory remains the same. They may use less energy, but the savings still is significant over the course of time. In terms of process, if a customer is interested, they can go to the Pioneer Community Energy website. We have a tab that says "programs" right there on the homepage. We then will connect the customer with Tesla. Tesla will design, build, permit, and install a customized system for the home. Participate Energy then buys that system from Tesla. It owns the system, and it provides the maintenance and the warranties throughout the course of the lease. Pioneer buys the energy from Participate through a power purchase agreement. All of that happens behind the scenes. From the customer perspective, they will get one bill from PG&E, as they do now. On that bill, they will be able to see what energy is generated, what is used, and then the customer pays that one bill, and PG&E, Pioneer, and Participate settle it behind the scenes. So it's very easy and user-friendly for customers. Just a little bit more about what to expect. We are having a very favorable response to this program, which launched in August. Plasterville launched, we launched in Plasterville on October 3rd. We already have at least three leads here. There has been a lot of interest, and we are doing a phase, we did do a phased rollout to make sure that there was enough time to answer customer questions and connect them with Tesla. We see a lot of potential with this program. We do anticipate that in 2025, we will begin retrofits for customers who already have solar but don't have a battery. We likely will extend this program into our commercial and industrial customers, and then we are also trying to think about strategies for customers who are on bill assistance programs. And that concludes my presentation. I want to thank you for this time. I do know the information is very dense, so I did leave with each of you a question-and-answer document. I'll also leave some by the door. And again, if you have any questions, visit our website, give us a call. We are local, and we are here to partner with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council?
No, it's very straightforward.
Okay. Can we have questions from the public? Wow, that was easy. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much for having me.
Appreciate it.
I'd like to thank Councilmember Yarborough for representing the city on this committee and doing just a great job. Yeah, it's been great. It's good to have that kind of representation. So thank you very much, David.
Just, well, I want to make a comment. Just, I guess it's great, you know, I was in a, I'm in a similar type of program. This is prior to this happening, when SolarCity was still in existence, prior to Tesla buying. And, you know, back then, like, there was a point where I was like, "Oh, this was a bad decision" because of some of the prices. But now, because of the changes at the CPUC and the way NEM is currently in its latest iteration, this is actually a great program for people, because it gives surety to, you know, over that 20-plus-year period where you're getting a rate. It's actually worked out really well for me now. And I think this will be a really good thing for people. It will take some education, I think, for people to understand it, because it's really hard to understand. But I do think this is a great thing for people to have. I think, I do have one question. So if you, so if you have a customer that wants to do it, but say they're in a two-story house, will they be able to still get two power, two power walls, or will it be, will they have to pay for an additional one if that's what Tesla says is the right sizing for your house?
So Tesla will customize the system based on the needs of the house. That's generally based on usage, not necessarily one-story, two-story, or house size. So it's, everything is custom-built.
That's great, because, I mean, they're still not inexpensive. They've come down in price, but that's a great thing for the customer, because that gives them surety that they're going to actually maximize the output for their individual home. So, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Good. All right. Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, we will move to item seven, the consent calendar. Do we have any council members that wish to pull an item? Okay, no? We will open the consent calendar to public comment.
Sue Rodman, resident of Plasterville, and my comments are concerning 7.6, the Ford Dodge pickup trucks. And I'm wondering why we are buying one of those trucks as operating on not gasoline, but diesel. We just had to get rid of our, the VAC machine, because it was diesel-operated. So why are we buying a diesel truck?
Okay. When you're, when we finish the public comment, I'll get answers. Okay, do we have any other questions on consent calendar? Seeing none, we will close public comment, and we will ask staff to answer that question.
Thank you, Mayor Noe. The reason that we got rid of the VACER, and we actually haven't sold that yet, but the reason that we weren't allowed to use it anymore is because it was 2007, and it had older emission systems on the engine. The reason that one of those Dodge pickup trucks is a diesel is because it has the increased tow capacity over the gas motors. And so with the current emission standards, there's nothing to say that, you know, 10 years down the road, that it might not be a viable option. But as of right now, it's something that we need to tow around bigger, the bigger trailers and stuff like that that we have. And it also, there's a section in there where, based on the weight, there were some new regulations that came out regarding zero emissions vehicles. We're within compliance of those requirements based on the weight, the gross vehicle weight rating of all three of those, I'm sorry, all four of those pickup trucks.
Thank you. All right, we'll bring this back to council for discussion and a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor Noe?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item eight, public comment, non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the City Council under specified circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit speakers' time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or may invade an individual's personal privacy. We'll open public comment. Okay, seeing no one, we, oh, there we go.
I wasn't going to go first, in case there was somebody else, but to the councils, I'm Sue Rodman, Plastero residence, and my comments relate to item 10.2 on the City Council Agenda from October 8th. This was a request to rezone a currently vacant 7.64 acre parcel from low-density residential to a state residential. In the information given on this property, it states that the slope on this property averages 20%. The 20% slope is very steep. By comparison, there is a warning for trucks to use lower gears on roads, starting at about 8%, and the highest I've seen is 13% slope, and I have never seen a warning on a road for a 20% slope. By the time you get to 20% with a vehicle, it's four-wheel drive, off-road trail. Certainly not suitable for low-density residential. An excessive amount of grading would be required for this parcel to implement low-density residential housing. That amount of grading would devastate the vegetative cover, increase the erosion risk exponentially, and make any development for low-density residential prohibitively expensive. I believe this parcel was included in the city's effort to meet the state requirements for low-income housing. While I can support the city's efforts to attempt to meet the state requirements and provide affordable housing, it needs to be done with appropriate analysis of these parcels. I believe the general plan map and zoning must be done with appropriate analysis of each parcel for the public to have any faith in city decisions. This reeks of taking the easy way out. Just move all vacant parcels into the category that meets the state requirements and deal with the fallout later. That certainly seems to be the case for this parcel. I would urge the city to do its due diligence with all of these parcels, with an individual analysis of each parcel, to determine whether it is actually suitable for low-density residential. I suspect that the case of this 7.64 parcel may not be unique, and if not, it undermines the credibility of the city to carry out its responsibility for land use designations. It brings up some doubts as to whether the city is serious about earning public trust.
Thank you.
Kirk Smith of Plasterville. I don't know if anybody here had come before you in the past few weeks to talk about, as a heads up, the Save the Graves program that was held this last week, but I wanted to mention it because I was extraordinarily impressed. I think there's a lot that can be learned from this I think there's a lot that can be learned from this program. A couple of things is that it was packed. You couldn't find street parking for blocks around. The place was covered with people and it just was that way for four or five hours. And I think that, I know a friend years ago chided me when I said that I went to both museums an average of once a month and said, what? Don't you do that just once when you come to town? And the answer is, with history, you're learning something all the time, no matter how long you study the subject. And the book that they put out is a wonderful reference you want to keep around for that reason. So, apart from being impressed for that reason, there's a second point. I think you made a modest contribution towards the cost. Otherwise, it was free of tax dollars. It was done by contributions and all volunteer labor, showing the tremendous talent that's available in the city. So if you're stuck for money next year, as you have been so far, you don't have to necessarily be praying for that next group of public servants to come in or that next round of public dollars. You've got a lot of talent that's here. And I think that's always helpful to know and acknowledge and be thankful for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kathy Lishman. I wasn't going to say anything, but since he mentioned Save the Graves, which is a wonderful program, I was kind of surprised to see their signs up all over town. I didn't know if they had to get a special permit for that. But it is really kind of a violation of the sign code, I would think. And so I think it needs to be looked at and considered because everybody's going to want to put their signs up too.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the city council. We'll move to 8.2, written communications. Do we have any?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item nine, items pulled from the consent calendar. We have none, which brings us to item 10, ordinances. Consideration of an ordinance adding Chapter 30, Tobacco Retailers, to Title V, Business Regulations to Regulate Retail of Tobacco Products and Establish a Tobacco Retail Licensing Program and Adopt a Resolution and Findings in Support of Said Ordinance. Mr. Rivas?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So what's before you is consideration of a tobacco retail ordinance. This is the first reading that would establish a licensing procedure for tobacco and vape shops. So before I move on to the next slide, I just want to highlight a couple of persons that the city has partnered with, and that's Kanzi Moot and Kristen Becker. They're with the El Dorado County Health and Human Services Agency, Public Health. And without their help, support, and guidance in shepherding this ordinance, we wouldn't be here this evening. And I also want to state Public Health Law Center. They're a, I believe they work throughout the country. They work with jurisdictions in preparing such ordinances. So this is a state-of-the-art ordinance in terms of its legality and how it's structured. And so, next slide, please. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the background. We've been working on this for five years now. On May the 28th of 2019, which is over five years ago, the city council ratified a memorandum of understanding with the California Department of Justice for the 2019-2021 Proposition 56 Tobacco Grant. And the city received $395,000 and $267,000. And that grant funded the ability of city staff to provide for education to retailers, schools, parents, and youth on the types of tobacco products and current laws regarding tobacco prevention, sales, use, including electronic smoking devices. The grant funding also funded DSD's Code Enforcement official at that time. We worked very closely with the Placerville PD in this effort. And the retail ordinance and draft tobacco-smoking ordinance as well was being prepared then, at that time, with the assistance of the County Public Health Division staff. On November 2nd of 2022, the County Public Health staff held a town hall meeting with the public at the Herbert Green Middle School to educate the public regarding tobacco products. Staff was in attendance at that town hall meeting, as well as council members were there as well. And it was a real eye-opener for me. I had no idea of the type of products that were now available to our youth to be able to get them indoctrinated into the use of tobacco and become addicted to nicotine. And you'll learn more about it later on in the program. On February 13th of this year, staff from the El Dorado County Public Health gave a presentation to the city council on current tobacco prevention efforts in El Dorado County and statewide and on local tobacco retail license requirements, local enforcement, including the prevention of retail sales of tobacco products to youth, the number of tobacco retailers, and other regulatory schemes, such as distance-to-schools, waste management regulations, such as prohibiting single-use electronic smoking devices. Following that council discussion and presentation, the city council then directed staff to return with an urgency ordinance to prohibit the establishment of any new tobacco retail shops to allow for the completion of a draft tobacco retail ordinance. At that time, since the county adopted an urgency ordinance as well, which imposed a moratorium on new tobacco shops, the council did have concerns that this may force more tobacco shops to locate within the city. On March 12th, the council did adopt an urgency ordinance that created a 45-day moratorium on the establishment of new tobacco retailers within the city. The urgency ordinance was to expire on April 26th unless extended by the council. There's another provision in the state law that requires that the council adopt action items to alleviate concerns by allowing the establishment of new tobacco retailer establishments 10 days prior to considering such an extension of the moratorium. So on April the 9th, the city council adopted the following actions as recommended by staff, and that's indicated in your staff report. I won't read those. But these efforts were to alleviate the effects of continued tobacco products and sales and operations. And as required, the following actions were adopted 10 days prior to the expiration of the urgency ordinance. Then on April the 23rd, the council adopted an ordinance which extended the 45-day moratorium for an additional 10 months and 15 days to allow for staff the opportunity to continue to collaborate with El Dorado County Public Health Division's Countywide Tobacco Use Prevention Program, TUPP, on developing the tobacco retail ordinance that is now before you this evening. This temporary moratorium will end on March 15th of 2025. Next slide, please. So I'm going to go over, next slide. Is that the next slide? Oh, okay. So, so the proposed addition to the city code referring to tobacco retailers, it's supported by a separate document, and those are the findings that are in your staff report as attachment to the document, Well-Established Negative Health Impacts of Tobacco Use, particularly relating to the city's youth and the recent expansion of tobacco retailers located in the city. Our agenda today includes a brief summary of the progression and development of these local tobacco regulations, as well as some of the current informations we've learned since our last few meetings that we've had regarding tobacco use, and a following of the summary of proposed ordinance and next steps. The ordinance before you today was prepared based on education received from the community, public health, and prior council input. The proposed addition to the city code relating to tobacco retailers is supported by the findings in the companion resolution, attachment two, and the documents well-established then, those impacts. So, next slide, please. So here, we're going to look at some of the statistics regarding tobacco use. So, from 2024 survey, we have learned that 7.8% of high schoolers and 3.5% of middle school students reported current e-cigarette use. And among students who currently use e-cigarettes, 38.4% of those report frequent use and 26.3% report daily use. The device types used most often by students reporting current e-cigarette use were disposables at about 55.6%. And vape devices reportedly used most often is the Elf Bar. And I don't know what the Elf Bar is. I think there's a picture of it up there, at 36.1%. The Elf Bar contains a very high level of nicotine. And we'll move on to slide four. So slide four is the Stanford Medicine Research Reach Lab. This slide was shared to us by Stanford Medicine Reach Lab. And you can see the nicotine content in the common vape devices compared to cigarettes. So, on the left, and I apologize, I think we need to go back to the previous slide. The one, that, that, that one. The, the red one. The one that, that one there. Sorry, I can't read that without my glasses and I can't see this without my glasses. So you can see the nicotine content in common vape devices compared to cigarettes. So on the left, you see a typical pack of cigarettes that contains 22mg of nicotine for 20 cigarettes. Next to that is the drool pod, which has a nicotine equivalent to, or about 37 cigarettes. And then what's called the V-Use Pod, that contains the equivalent of about 82 cigarettes. And in furthest to the right, the one recently reported to be the most commonly used by youth is the Elf Bar. A single Elf Bar e-cigarette contains 650mg of nicotine. That's equivalent to 590 cigarettes in a single device. And there is still widespread youth vaping crisis. And nicotine is highly addictive. Someone who uses vapes may become addicted to nicotine and find it difficult to stop. One can only become addicted to nicotine within days of starting its use, even if only vaping occasionally. So now, next slide, please. My apologies. So we are at a critical point. And it was over 60 years ago when the Surgeon General's report linked smoking to lung cancer, making us aware of the danger. Yet in 2024, smoking remains as a leading cause of preventable disease and death in the United States. Our youth are exposed to very sophisticated marketing techniques designed to entice them to use tobacco products. That marketing has been deemed even more powerful than peer pressure and to increase tobacco experimentation and use. Of over the 9,000 e-cigarette products being marketed, only 34 have been authorized by the FDA. The rest are being marketed illegally. Unauthorized products are being sold in El Dorado County and City of Placerville stores. Among the reason we're concerned about this is without the regulation and oversight, we don't know what's in those devices and what other toxins are contained, getting into our youth and what they're being exposed to. Teens who vape are three times more likely to become daily cigarette smokers. Former FDA Commissioner Scott Gottlieb, MD, made this statement. Cigarettes are the only legal consumer product that, when used as intended, will kill half of all long-term users. Even though the dangers have been long known by those who are counted on to protect the public, there continues to be an alarming problem with tobacco product amongst our use. Slide six, please. So the proposed ordinance, Tobacco Retail Licensing Ordinance, and this is in response to the urgency ordinance council being directed to draft this ordinance, which is before you. This is to regulate tobacco retail businesses. And local tobacco retail license aims to ensure compliance with tobacco laws and to encourage responsible retailing of tobacco, tobacco products, and electronic smoking devices. Proposed ordinance will require an annual license for tobacco retailers. It will prohibit retailers from selling flavored tobacco products, single-use electronic cigarettes, and non-FDA-approved or authorized electronic cigarettes. It will establish minimum tobacco product pricing and packaging size, requires onsite tobacco product sales. It will prohibit pharmacies from selling tobacco products. And the ordinance will oppose, impose a cap on the total number of licensed tobacco retailers based on population size. So that would be one per 25,000 residents. So to move on then, earlier today, I want to report that the El Dorado County Board of Supervisors adopted the first reading of their tobacco ordinance, which is almost identical to this one. The board did make one change, and they doubled the fines that are being imposed in their ordinance. Lastly, I want to report that on May 13th of 2024, the Placerville Police Department assisted the California Department of Tax and Administration, the CDTFA, inspectors to conduct inspections of several tobacco shops located within our city. Four of these smoke vape shops were inspected and all four were found to be selling not only products banned under AB 793, but also selling unlawful cannabis products. So with that, staff is recommending that you adopt the resolution, finding a well-established negative health impacts of tobacco use. Two, introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance adding Chapter 30, Tobacco Retailers, to Title V, Business Regulations, to regulate retail sales of tobacco products and electronic smoking devices, and to require the licensing of tobacco retailers. Three, find that this proposed ordinance is not a project within the meaning of the Public Resources Code 21065 and not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. And four, then direct staff to return the council with a resolution that would establish a tobacco licensing fee schedule. And with that, I just want to state that we do have, El Dorado County Health and Human Services staff here are present to answer any, any detailed questions you may ask. It's beyond my level of expertise regarding tobacco consumption. And with that, that concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have questions from the council?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Just one, thank you, Pierre. I appreciate, two questions, I guess. First one is just a baseline question in that with the ordinance, and that is, would future, potentially future retailers of tobacco products, they still would be allowed, but they'd have to go through this licensing program?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any, any new business would, would be subject to this, but that would be after the ordinance takes effect.
Gotcha, okay. And then the second is, I know we got some, we got comments on, I guess, cannabinoid THC-type of, of products. I think you might have mentioned this, the AB 793, I think, type of products. That I, I mean, I think you see this, and I've seen this. You go to any of these gas stations or anywhere, they're like, you know, they're set up on the counter selling these things. Now, are, I didn't, I'm not sure if all of those are illegal, if only some of those are illegal. And then if that's the case, and then that, that's kind of a, a problem along with this. Is that something that we should look to include in this? Or is that something completely different because it's not considered actually tobacco?
Well, if they're selling cannabis products, we only have, we've issued two, two licenses to two cannabis dispensaries. They're the only operations that we've been branded to sell cannabis products. There was a loophole in the state, state regulations regarding, oh, what do you, what do you call it? It's the, it's the rope, it's the...
Hemp, like the Delta whatever.
Yeah, and so what they were doing is they were concentrating that hemp. So it was exceeding actually the amount of THC that they were permitted to have. So that would be something we'd pursue. And I do want to make a minor correction if, if I made a earlier question. We still are under the moratorium, unless it's appealed, but by, by this ordinance. And so that, that extends to 2025 as well.
Right, till March.
Yeah, all those will have to come under a license eventually.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
So I think I have a kind of related question to that. So with the cap on number of business license per residence, would that start from new businesses? Or would the existing businesses that get licensed, then if they already exceed that one per 2,500, mean at that point, unless one of those businesses closes, no new licenses would be issued?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we're looking at one licensed tobacco shop for 2,500 persons. And I think current population is about 10,600 and some odd person. So we're looking at about, maybe we'll be able to license four. So those, those businesses that are legally operating will be grandfathered in. And so until through attrition, we get back down to four, we won't see any new...
And so until through attrition, we get back down to four, we won't see any new tobacco businesses in the City of Placerville.
Okay, great. I just wanted to understand that. And then I think the other was just another baseline question related to the pharmacy prohibition. Do we currently have any pharmacies that are selling tobacco products in the City of Placerville?
I do not believe we do.
Okay.
Does Rite Aid still sell cigarettes?
Rite Aid sells cigarettes.
Rite Aid still has, uh, tobacco, whatever. COO, the state of the town, says...
Yeah. I just, I'm just trying to understand, like, our baseline conditions, so...
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's good. I like that.
What I've read, Rite Aid is still carrying a license in Placerville, but I did read that their COO was quoted as saying that Rite Aid intends to stop selling tobacco products. So in the county of El Dorado, they, I'm not sure if, I think that your ordinance is written the same way, they will be granted a one-year, like a one-time license, that's not renewable. And hopefully that will align with when they were planning to stop selling tobacco anyhow.
Thank you. Did you have anyone?
I have a question. We got an email from Ms. Aubrey from the Chucks. And do, all right, if we, if we pass what's here, does that put the kibosh on what's going on in these other places? Or should we be more explicit? Because I really would, if we need to be more explicit, I would just as soon be more explicit in our ordinance and say, oh, and by the way, you can't sell this. I mean, really drive to home that they cannot sell, you know, try to skirt the law and sell THC stuff in, in, in ropes, in hemp product.
Hemp.
Yeah.
So to answer your question, you know, basically, we do have a cannabis ordinance that regulates sale of cannabis products. And so that's what they're permitted to sell under the current...
Right.
...ordinance for that type of product.
Right.
But if they're, if they want to become a tobacco shop as well, and a vape shop...
I'd somehow doubt that's the case.
And it'd be a separate license.
What I'm talking about are the tobacco shops that have been selling this stuff. And I guess, are they still doing it?
Um, I would, I would maybe look over at our Chief of Police, because I don't want to get too much into the weeds, because that's an ongoing case.
I understand that.
Confiscated product, and...
Okay. If you don't, just blink twice.
Because there are ongoing investigations.
Fine. Enough said. Don't answer my question.
I really want to answer.
What do they always say in the, in the lawyer shows, when they get objection, they go, re-cla, denied, or I forget, overruled, or withdrawn? I withdraw the question. Okay.
Mona, can you provide any context? Because I, I think we both have similar questions in terms of the new law that passed that is trying to rope in...
Hemp.
Hemp.
THC.
Into, to regulate it, so that we don't have, because I...
Yes.
You do tend to see these things in lots of different places.
So during the last discussion, when the council approved the moratorium on the tobacco retailer ordinance, there was direction given to staff to bring back a hemp ordinance that provided regulations with respect to retailers, and that will now include this. So that will be forthcoming, and it will specify both a retailer's ability to sell hemp, especially prohibiting anything that has THC in it. And it's going to be separate from this, because there's definitions that need to be inserted, and so, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that everything? Okay, we will open this item to public comment.
Madam Mayor, as mentioned, the city council did receive one item of written communication. Copies are on the back table, as well as posted to the city's website.
Good evening. My name is Catalina Reinhardt, and I'm speaking on behalf of William Marveaux, who works for the Sierra Club and couldn't be here today. So I'm here to express the opportunity that the City of Placerville has to catch up to the 107 other jurisdictions that are aware of how these items affect their environment and communities. The health of communities throughout the state is also affected by these harmful products. Landfill workers deal with e-cigarettes every day and are exposed to harmful toxic tobacco waste, and the dangers of fires and explosions due to lithium batteries found in cheap vapes. E-cigarettes have been linked to costly destructive structural fires and wildfires that threaten both wildlife and communities. Sierra Club interviewed landfill workers in Northern California. They expressed a difficulty of disposal of e-cigarettes based on their electronic waste, classification, and the hazardous materials within them. Many jurisdictions do not have the infrastructure for proposal, for proper disposal of these materials, and spend lots of time and money transferring them to proper disposal sites. Cigarette butts continue to be the number-one trash item found on beaches and road sides, representing 34% of the total trash items collected in California. Over 4.5 trillion cigarette butts are littered, are littered each year, and are made from non-biodegradable, single-use plastics called cellulose acetate. The global weight of discarded cigarette butts is roughly 680,000 metric tons. Cigarette butts and cigarette, and e-cigarettes may release toxic chemicals such as nicotine formaldehyde, acetone, and benzene into the environment, as well as heavy metals, including arsenic, lead, and cadmium. Fires caused by lithium-ion batteries and e-cigarettes have become so prolific that insurance costs for hazardous waste facilities have skyrocketed, the cost of which is passed down to households. California agencies spend over $41 million each year on tobacco waste cleanup from road sides. Single-use plastic can have a range of secondary costs to human health, the environment, and economy that can be hard to quantify, such as the ingestion, ingestion of single-use plastics by marine wildlife, and the economic impacts of litter on tourism. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Madam Mayor, Honorable Council Members, Pierre. I was sad and happy to hear about your retirement at the same time. I have other matters bubbling up that I was going to have to work with you on, and I'll have to wait till the new director comes on board. Now to, now to the resolution that you guys are debating or considering. I've been a Placerville resident since 1991. More importantly, I've been a lifelong smoker, and I wish I never started. I still struggle with nicotine addiction today, and anything you guys can do to halt or prevent young people from getting hooked on it, I support. Thank you kindly for your time.
Thank you.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. I shared with you the last time the way that cigarettes killed my father. And just recently, my ex-husband, who started smoking when he was in high school, had his foot amputated. Mostly thanks to being a longtime smoker, and then trying to quit smoking, decided that nicotine gum was a good alternative. Well, now he has lost his right foot. So life has become a lot more difficult. And if these ordinances had been in place, and tobacco had not been such a prevalent part of American culture for so long, people would have a much better outcome. It not only causes cancer, but it also causes problems with the circulatory system. My father didn't die from cancer, he died from a heart attack, from nicotine effects on his blood system and his heart. My ex didn't get his foot amputated because of cancer, he got it amputated because of the effects of nicotine on the circulatory system. So I certainly, I congratulate this person for trying to quit, and urge him to go ahead and get quit, and don't, don't go to nicotine cigarettes either. But we need this ordinance. We need to protect our children. Our high school kids are subject to this, and I have seen it when you go past a high school, and you see a group of kids out smoking. And they don't know what they're getting themselves in for. I'm sure none of them would like to go six years, seven years down the road and find out that they're now minus their right foot. So, yes, let's pass this ordinance.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Conci Moat, Tobacco Use Prevention Program Director from the County of El Dorado. And I just wanted to speak to what the County of El Dorado is, is looking at, all of the same ordinance requirements as yours has. And one of the things that we talked about at the meeting today was just an extra piece of information that's good to know about what the state has just done in support of the ordinance that you're looking at. Last time we were here, the question of online sales came up, and there wasn't a way to address that in the ordinance, but the state has done that for you. So they, and AB 3218, which has, was just signed into law and becomes effective in 2025, that will really back you up, because it will require anybody from outside of your jurisdiction who, through delivery sales, delivers a tobacco product, they will have to follow the exact same laws as the jurisdiction that they're selling into. So if you pass a tobacco retail license, it will apply beyond your own borders.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Lishman, again. I listened to the board meeting today, and one of the things they were saying is that it wouldn't go in effect until April, I think that's what they said. So I wanted to know what Pierre says about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Savannah Hobbs, and we moved here in 1991, and our kids went to Schnell, and Markham, and El Dorado, and love this small town, but I, I really don't like the whole idea of any kind of nicotine product being available to our kids. And I, you know, I see how hard it is to, to quit, and I just hope they never have the opportunity to have an easy way to start, so...
Thank you.
Good evening. Kristen Becker, Placerville resident, also worked for Public Health for El Dorado County. We did present to the Board of Supervisors this morning, and I have this statistic for Stanford Medicine, and I didn't get an opportunity to share it, but I really would like to share it with council, because what we're really here for is the concern and to protect our youth. And what really stood out to me, as I continue to do research on tobacco and use and addiction, is that the legal age for tobacco and cigarette products is 21. So if we can prevent our youth from starting until the legal age, the statistic is 90% of those who struggle with addiction started before the age of 21. That is not surprising, that commercial tobacco targets our youth and gets them addicted. As you saw on the slides, the Elf Bar, which is the most popular vape product with our youth, has almost 600 cigarettes, 600 cigarettes in one device. And because nicotine is being manufactured as a nicotine salt, it's not irritating the throat. So that natural body response is not there. Another statistic from Stanford Medicine that just came out, which really was eye-opening, is the use of e-cigarettes within five minutes of waking up. In 2017, less than 1% of users used e-cigarettes within five minutes of waking up. In 2021, it's over 10%. I think that really speaks to the addiction of these products. And as was mentioned, the FDA has only approved 34 e-cigarettes, but there's actually over 15,000 e-cigarettes being sold illegally, and we don't know what's in those products. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring this back to council for further discussion and a motion. I sure do like that idea of doubling the fines. I mean, we have a bunch of people who aren't following the rules to begin with, give them more motivation. Just a thought.
I have one question. Pierre, what, the, the one retailer per 2,500 inhabitants, is that just like a industry standard for this? I'm just wondering where that number came from.
It was a...
I see shaking heads, yes, but...
It was a standard, is my, my understanding, but I'm sure the, you know, any one of the county people can be specific on that. But it's my understanding, it's a typical standard.
Okay. Thank you.
So I probably said this, and I forgot. These standards would apply to anywhere where they sell tobacco products, right? Like, not just Billy Bob's Smoke Shop, but, you know, AMPM and that sort of thing, correct? I see nodding heads. You know, it's funny, if you look right this direction, all you get, you don't have to say a word. They're nodding up and down, it's great. Thank you. Answered my question, thanks.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I guess that was a little bit of my, where I was going, was, you know, not the unintended consequences, because I think these are very intentional consequences, but, you know, also looking at it from a, you know, we're allowed to make stupid decisions for ourselves as well.
You know, it's a tough call, because I'm a civil libertarian, but, you know, I mean, there's some things that are no-brainers, and you can do them, and, you know. The thing that gets me is like the thing with, with the THC, though, because they're just playing cozy with the law, and that just pisses me off, you know? I get angry about stuff like that. I mean, we went through this whole rigmarole on cannabis, and tied ourselves in knots, and had public meetings, and then some schmo opens up a smoke shop, and then they start selling this stuff, and, and, and that's got to, that's got to come to an end. Yeah, I mean, the problem is, these are, I mean, it's kids, and, you know, I spend, I do the chains at the El Dorado High School varsity football games, and I'll tell you, kids are funny, and they do weird things sometimes. And having been a kid, and kind of remembering what that was like, I know the things I did when I was 16 years old, and thank God I'm still here. Anyway, I have no other questions. It sounds like we've covered all our bases.
Councilmember Gopur.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would just say, you know, I think businesses should be able to sell tobacco, legal tobacco products to adults, right?
Yes.
So I certainly have no problem with licensing as a means by which to better enforce against bad actors which are selling to children, or selling products that are not, you know, legal in the state of California. You know, I do, the, the limit on number is sort of where I do get a little bit hung up. But I also think, you know, four tobacco retail shops in a town of our size is probably sufficient for adults who want to use it to get their products. We have two cannabis retailers, and that's sufficient for our adults who want to use that to get their products. And it would be something that would be through attrition over time, right? So we're not saying that, you know, we're going to shut down everybody but four retailers today. We're allowing anybody who's currently a good actor, who is selling the product, to get in, and then, you know, over time, as businesses go out of business, or stop wanting to sell that product, then it would open up the ability for new folks to come in. So, you know, I know I was the one who was a little bit the most reserved on the moratorium to begin with, but when reading this ordinance and kind of thinking it through, I, I'm okay with it, although I still, you know, again, the people should be free to do what they want part of me.
Oh, yeah.
And adults should certainly be free to choose to use tobacco products if they so choose, that's their health decision for themselves. I think we're not trying to take that away from them, nor are we trying to, other than the one pharmacy, which was kind of my concern, but if they're already putting out statements that they're going to stop doing it anyway, then we're not really taking away anybody's current business opportunity, you know, with this ordinance.
Since, I believe, we're over our critical mass on the 2,500 per, whatever, per store, are the, are the licenses, would you be able to sell your smoke shop if this thing gets passed?
No. It, it won't work that way. It won't be like the, similar to, I guess, the state in their...
Liquor license.
Liquor licenses.
Okay. That's, thank you very much. That's, that's...
That's a good question. So it would go with the, yeah? So that wouldn't preclude them? Okay, that's good.
Good. What is the will of the council?
I'll move the staff recommendation, whatever it was. Hold a second.
Roll call, please.
I kind of forgot, it was, we talked so much.
Councilmember Gopur?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragota?
Aye.
Councilmember...
And just for the record, the staff's recommended action was to adopt the resolution adopting findings in support of the ordinance and waiving the first reading and proposed ordinance.
Didn't I say that? Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay. We will move to item 11, public hearings, we have none. We'll move to items 12, 12.1, receive and file a presentation from the El Dorado County Fire Protection District Finance Committee and consider approving a letter of support to the State Comptroller Office to perform a pension study and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Mr. Morris.
I forgot, this was mine, but I'm going to turn it over to them to handle this, so. How's that?
Great, good job.
Well, Mr. Warren prepared this report, not me, and he's not here tonight, so I forgot.
Do you want us to read the report, or do you want us to take you into it? You've read the report.
We've read, we've read the report, it looks like you have a presentation. Do you want to take us through the presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and staff. So, my name is Mickey Kaiserman, and this is Paul Gilchrist. We are board members for El Dorado County Fire, and we are on the Finance Committee. So, I'm just going to give you a little background before we get into this. So, as part of being on the Finance Committee, we did a deep dive into our pension obligations, unfunded pension liability, and we came across an inequity in there in how the pension obligation is allocated between agencies when someone retires. So, the basis of it is, and we didn't know this, you don't even see it, but we had someone that worked for us as a captain, then went on to become a fire chief at another agency, and when they left, we, they were, they had to report to us, because the amount was over $100,000, that we were getting a certain share of this person's pension obligation. So, we contacted Senator Dolly, and he tried to put through a pension reform bill that got, he didn't have it with a study, he just put it through a pension reform bill that got killed in the committee. We then met with Alvarado Gill, and Director Gilchrist, he will take you through the details, I'm just giving you a little background, and we got that passed through the committee five to zero to do a study. It got to the Appropriations Committee, it got killed there because they said the state is running a deficit. So, now we're taking a different approach. Director Gilchrist and I have been going around to rural agencies, fire departments, government officials we met with, in fact, the sheriff of El Dorado County, he supports this, were asking for a letter of support from all these government agencies, because it affects all of us in the rural communities that lose employees to agencies that pay higher wages. It's not just somebody that becomes a fire chief, but it could be somebody that works for the police department, as a correction officer and goes down to Folsom or goes to the city. We were losing firefighter paramedics, and they were getting 30% more in their wages, and that's going to affect us in the long run. So, we're looking for you to sign this letter of support, we're getting it from other agencies, and with that, I will hand it over to Director Gilchrist and will take you through our PowerPoint, and we'll answer any questions.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilman, or people, sorry, my bad. So, yes, as Director Kaiserman noted, we've been at this, actually, for about six years that we've been on the fire department, on the board. We went through a four-year education class with Chief Dutch, just kidding, but have learned a lot from him about this, and it's taken us some time to be able to distill this down into comprehensible slides, so that we don't really get into the details of it. So, on the first one, what we're going to talk about is an annuitent that has got a pension obligation of $360,000. We're going to do some comparison versus time served versus salary earned, and then if we, if it requires it, we can get into some actual unfair pension cost impositions, and we'll talk a little bit about classic pension allocations, and then what the eligible pension allocation based on a lifetime versus earned, salary earned. As Director Kaiserman mentioned, we have gone down the legislative route, and I'll provide a little bit more color on that as well. So, to the first slide, this is the most important one, where on the left-hand side, you'll look at time served, which is how current classic employees with CalPERS are paid. So, we have a person coming up to fruition here who is not yet retired, but will be retiring at another agency later next year. That person worked for El Dorado County Fire for five years as a firefighter one. The salary he earned was $60,000 per, per year, or, I'm sorry, for the five years total, it was a very entry level. The person is now working 25 years with another, where has been promoted to, actually, the fire chief. And his annual salary, it's $300,000, or the pension obligation would be $300,000 coming to it, based on those years of service. So, that totals up to the time served model of $300,000. 16% of the 360 is the $60, 83% of the 360,000 is the $30,000 and gets you to the 360. If you look at the total salary earned model, while this employee was with El Dorado County Fire, the total salary earned was 5,4500 over five years, which is 1.7% of the total salary earned over the lifetime for that employee. And, and if you say it's based on the salary earned, county fires' obligation would be roughly $6,000, as opposed to $60,000. And I'm pausing for a minute to let that sink in, and if you.
The key is, right now, they're allocating it on time served. So, if you worked for us for 15 years, and you earned a certain amount, and then you worked somewhere else for the last 15 years, and you got the 3%, 30% you were a classic employee, you got 90% of your final salary, they would then take that number and do it based on time served, we'd pay half, and the other agency would pay half, as opposed to salary earned. So, that's what, the left side shows time served, five over 30, we're paying 16 points percent. If we're getting, if we're working it over total salary, we'd be paying 1.7%.
And it's, it's, I'm, it's really trying to drill the point home, because a lot of people will look and say, well, the PEPRA revision to CalPERS solves all the problems. Even with PEPRA, this will continue to exist. So, it is there. And the next slide shows our, in a graphical form, what it is versus, on the left is how much you would pay under the year served model, and on the right is the graphic of what you would pay as salary earned. So, it's really imperative that this is looked at, and so this only, this doesn't just affect the fire districts, it's any rural agency throughout the state. And we know a lot of folks go to the world, rural agencies to get their start in their career, and then they're attracted to the metropolitan areas where they can get a higher salary. Can't blame them for that, that's capitalism, they want, they want the best they can for their families, all the right thing. So, the ask here is not to reduce their pension in any way, shape, or form. The ask is, for those that hire, promote, and pay the higher wages, have them pay their responsibility, and don't push it back on the rural counties or the rural jurisdictions within all the counties, as well as rural county government. So, we talked through the employee career starts in a rural agency, transfers to metropolitan, and these, there's a lot of details, as we covered, that go into what is occurring. So, again, I don't know that, I see a lot of nodding up there that I don't need to read the detail here, so I'm going quick, and I know it's a long evening, but it's significant in, I'm just trying to get to, and here we go again with the salary earned, all the details. So, I want to really hone in on this point here. We started with Senator Dolly in 2022 on this, and he brought the Senate Bill 1420 forward, that, as Director Kaiserman said, it didn't make it out of committee. Then we went to Senate Bill 660. It made it out of committee 50, which means we had state support for it, and there, to come forward. But as Director Kaiserman said, the, because there was a budget shortfall, it never made it out, it went into appropriations, but it never made it out of appropriations, because there was an ask for $1 million to fund the Comptroller's Office to do this. Recently, I met with Senator Alvarado Gill and her staff, and they have proposed to say, we would like to take another run, as well as a parallel track, a run legislatively and parallel track, and go directly to the Comptroller's Office. And so, we have that support. Assemblyman Patterson is in support of this as well. And as Director Kaiserman noted, we have gone to Redding and talked with the mayor of Redding and the city manager of Redding, they're on board with it. The city of Anderson, just south, their fire department's on board with it, and I believe this month, they're bringing it to their city council on our behalf. So, with that, these are the details associated with the letter I saw in your package, you've written that letter, you're ready to hear this presentation and talk about it. So, our ask is an appeal to you to support the letter, move forward with it, and, so that we can get some fairness into how we're, how this state is handling its pensions, and stop hobbling the rural areas of the state. Thank you.
The other thing is, when you get your pension, when you get your unfunded pension liability bill, or even whatever you're, they're paying, you don't get a detailed listing of who they're paying. So, we're requesting that as well, because you don't even know what you're paying and who you're paying it to. You know there's a number out there when somebody retires, but over the years, you don't know who's being paid what. And so, that's part of our ask in the study. But the, the real key is to get, we think the Comptroller's Office will do the study, Alvarado Gill thinks we should go and present it again, but we'll try whatever we can to help us out, because this is totally inequitable, it's unfair, and it puts a burden on all the rural agencies. I'm sure that your police department's losing policemen to go down and work in other agencies, we experience it in the fire department. And even, we were surprised that the sheriff, he experiences, he loses officers down to Folsom and other areas. City of Redding, we thought they were pulling in people, they're losing people to the bigger cities. So, it's every rural community is experiencing this. So, we just ask for you, it's not going to cost you anything to sign the letter.
One other thing to add, Mickey and I have been looking at what our payment obligations are to CalPERS for the last six years, and the payment was, what, four years ago, about $800,000. We're now looking at $3 million for, for the year. So, I'm just saying, it, and this is because not, and it's, you're picking up the tab for other agencies that have hired and promoted resources that worked here. And so, I'm sure you've looked at your pension obligation requirements through your accounting capabilities, or I'm assuming, and if you were to just look at what it's done over the last six years, it's, I believe, wholeheartedly, it would be staggering.
Thank you both for your persistence on this issue, appreciate it. Questions from the council? Michael?
Yeah, so, so this only applies, I guess, to classic, right? So, pre, post, so this is also post-PEPRA?
Everyone. Because anybody that moves, they're going to get paid more, you're going to.
Right.
They didn't take that out.
It covers all, it covers everyone. So, the study, so it doesn't change anything, the study's going to prove a fact that we know. Then the issue is going to come. When we went with first with Senator Dolly, we got rural, we got metropolitan agencies calling us up and saying, wow, if this bill goes through, it's really going to affect us. And we said, what do you think it's doing to us? We're footing the bill for those things, and they know it.
Well, and to that point, though, I mean, just the basic realities of politics in the Capitol is LA and San Francisco swing a lot bigger than we do in the rural areas. I suggest reaching out to Speaker Rivas's office. I mean, he, he's in a unique position to be speaker, but also represent mostly a rural area. You're going to need somebody like that in order to make this go, as much as I think the world of our local representatives, we're going to need more oomph at the plate in order to get something like this through, because obviously, Los Angeles and others are going to be like, well, hell no, we're not going to change anything. So, you're fighting an uphill battle, as you, as you well know. But I do think with maybe some other alliances, you know, it could certainly be helpful. I'm certainly happy to, you know, connect you with the speaker's office or, you know, other folks like that.
The key is the study, because the study's going to show the inequity so clearly that how, then you're, because when we explain it to anybody, we explain it to a high school student, he says, that's not fair.
Oh, yeah. Well, fairness never, never passes much mustard in Sacramento, so.
We know that, but at least we have the unfair side of it, and it's egregious in a lot of ways, so I think that we have going on our side.
No, I applaud what you guys are doing, appreciate it.
Personally, that connection would be great. Senator has reached out, it will be reaching out as well, and I understand that Senator Protam of the Senate is also a rural area.
Correct.
And so, if we can have.
They'll be out for another year.
If we have connections, we would absolutely welcome that, and part of this letter is to, hey, say there is support from the rural communities that this needs to be cured, or at least studied to ensure that what we have seen at county fire is actually, in fact, what is occurring.
Yeah, no, it would be helpful, because if you can speakerize a Protam bill, it certainly has the legs to go further, otherwise, you'll probably see this bill continuing to die in appropriations every, every year.
Okay, we'll take public comment on this item.
Well, I can see that this is totally unfair, and I do my own income taxes, and sometimes the income taxes seem pretty unfair, the way they're, they're structured too, but this is just horrendous. So, yeah, I think we need to push it far as we can, because this is hurting our city, where it means we are paying for our employees who move on a larger proportion than we should be paying.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bring it back to council for further discussion and a motion.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Can we have roll call, please?
Counselmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Counselmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Counselmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor Nell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to 12.2, consider approving and accepting the award by the California Public Utility Commission for the Last Mile Federal Funding Account Grant in the amount of $20 million for the broadband fiber planning project, approving a budget appropriation for an equal amount for said grant, and authorizing the city manager, city attorney, city clerk to execute any related documents necessary to secure said grant. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'll be brief on this, and before I start, I want to, again, give a lot of credit to the man behind the curtain back here, Steve McCarger, who, who actually wrote this report and did most of the work on it, and is our key person in keeping this project moving forward. This is very simple, actually, it's to, it's required for us to accept the grant and will allow us to move forward with the actions necessary to receive $20 million. You can see, it's listed here, what the project will do, that was outlined to you at a previous meeting. Mr. McCarger did a presentation talking about what the grant will do, and that's just listed again in here. So, we actually have, once, once we accept the award, we, or actually, once we receive the official award, we have up to 24 months to complete this project, the $20 million project. So, and it's imperative that we move quickly on this, and this is one of the first steps, and there's an agenda item following this one that will move us forward towards that also, so.
Great, thank you. Questions from council? No? Okay, we will open this for public comment. Seeing none, we will bring this back for discussion and a motion.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Have roll call, please.
Counselmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Counselmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Counselmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor Nell?
Aye. Thank you. Moves us to item 12.3, consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a master services agreement with Entry Point Networks Incorporated to provide project management, construction, and operational services related to the deployment of fiber optic communications, infrastructure, and advanced networking solutions for the broadband fiber planning project. Mr. Morris?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and again, thank you to Mr. McCarger for his work on this. This is really the meat of what we want to do here. And as you know, as I previously mentioned, 24 months to complete this $20 million project is a heavy lift. In order to do that, we need help. And Entry Point has been a good partner for us throughout this project. I want to introduce again who's been to our meeting before, Jeff Christensen from Entry Point, the, I think, president, CEO of Entry Point. I'm not sure of the exact title, but he started Entry Point. And he can answer any questions you may have. This will allow us to do all of these things, but doesn't require us to do any of them, actually. We think that we will move forward with these, but this just puts it in motion so we can start that process. Once we sign the agreement, we can then issue work orders for them to proceed with any or all of these going forward. Previous discussions with our city attorneys, some of these we may have to take a look at and may have to do differently, but we're still working on that and figuring out exactly how we can do these. So we're excited to move forward with this, and we'll move quickly going forward. And this will probably be the, not be the last item that will come before you on this. We'll be back to you again. So.
Okay, thank you. Do we have questions from the council?
No.
Okay, seeing none. Do we have questions from the public?
I speak to you as Mickey Kaiserman on Peak, and I'm on the broadband subcommittee. And I worked with this group before on the feasibility study, and I'm really thankful and grateful that we got to this point to get this money. And I think it's fantastic. It's going to really be a big plus for the city overall, once we put this in, because a lot of businesses are going to want to move here if we have broadband. It's going to put us on the map with like the gateway to the Sierras. A lot of young people are going to want to move to this town. So I'm really excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments, questions? We have an expert in the House? No one? Okay, we will close public comment and bring this back to the council for further discussion, motion?
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
We have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor Nell?
Aye. Thank you for being here this evening. Okay, that moves us to item 12.4. Planning Commission Recommendation to the City Council Regarding Resolution 78, oh, I'm asking, I'm being requested for a five-minute break. We will take a five-minute break until 7:00. Thank you.
We have important stuff to talk about.
All right. Welcome back, everyone. Now, we're going to do 12.4. Planning Commission Recommendation to the City Council Regarding Resolution 7896, Establishment of the Historical Advisory Committee. Mr. Rivas?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. To give a little background, on June 14th of 2022, the City Council directed staff to include a CIP for funding of an historic asset inventory and to schedule a joint city council planning commission workshop to review the city's current zoning regulations for the protection of the city's historic assets and the application of the Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation and guidelines for rehabilitating historic buildings. So CIP 42302 was approved in the fiscal year 2022-2023 operating budget. And then on May 2nd of 2023, last year, at the request of Chair Friend of the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission approved a special committee appointing Commissioners Carter and Smith to determine how the commission will act in the exercise of its duties as the Historic Advisory Committee and to develop recommendations for the city council, for the city council's consideration regarding those responsibilities of the Historic Advisory Committee given to the Planning Commission by council resolution, and that's Resolution 7896, following the suspension of the Historic Advisory Committee. A joint city council planning commission historic preservation workshop was held on August 29th of 2023 and was facilitated by ECorp Consulting. And then on April the 2nd of this year, Commissioners Friend and Smith, no, Commissioners Carter and Smith provided an overview of a draft memorandum and recommended priorities of the planning, to the Planning Commission. And Chair Friend made the following findings. One, there is a clear need for continued effort surrounding historic districts. Two, the responsibilities and duties of the previous Historic Advisory Committee are now vested in the Planning Commission. Three, establishment of a new Historic Advisory Committee is impractical and would create a substantial demand on city staff. And four, the Historic Review Special Committee has completed its task and is now disbanded. Chair Friend then requested that an item be added to the next upcoming agenda for establishment of a standing committee for historic districts. So on April 16th, Chair Friend requested of the Planning Commission to change the item from consideration of a standing committee back again to a special committee, in that there is a continued need for more effort regarding the city's historic districts. As the Planning Commission was not in favor of a standing committee, the Planning Commission then recreated the special committee with the task of refining and finalizing the draft memorandum that was provided to the commission on April 2nd to be brought back to the Planning Commission. And then October 1st of this year, the Planning Commission approved the memorandum and directed staff to forward to the city council regarding the historic preservation issues recommended by the PC. This recommendation follows the recommendations from the Historic Review Special Committee to the Planning Commission, which was originally formed back in May 2nd of 2023. At this time, staff is not making any recommendations, as we feel more time is necessary to review the memo and its impact on staffing. The council can simply receive and file the memorandum at this time and take it under consideration as part of the strategic planning slash budget process in the spring of 2025. The Development Services Department is currently understaffed and having a frozen unfilled position. Staff is currently having difficulty in meeting current project workloads and development activity demands. This concludes staff report. Be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you. Do we have questions from the council?
No, I don't have any. I have thoughts, but not a question.
Okay. Okay, we will open this for public comment?
Madam Mayor, just like to state for the record, that one item of written communication was received from Ryan Carter. Copies of that comment are on the back table, as well as posted at the city's website.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one, we will bring it back to-
Wait, 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 I think there are.
Oh, okay, we do have public comment.
Sure. By the way, I remember that, but speaking of my personal capacity, and not as one of those two members, for whatever that means, just to explain my vote and my position, because it's represented by the work that we did throughout the course of a year in that one memo. Lovely work, but I don't recognize it. It's got today's date, but it never went back to us. And it seems that we often defer to the staff, whereas I took an oath that I was going to faithfully execute the duties and the laws entrusted to me, but it often comes back to the staff. So a number of people got confused when they looked at the heading and said to reinstitute the Historic Advisory Committee, because that's not what's in there. And of the five areas that we asked to look at, it was that we would look at it. And our proposal was that we do it, because that's what you transferred to us, something like 10 years ago. It does not take a whole bunch of staffing. It's set up a date, and you hear from the public. We're not talking about some long gabfest. You start off with one issue at a time. We already know that the business of the standards are a mess. You were told, you, the council, when they were presented to you, they were not complete. They expected to be changed. They needed to be revised. That was 10 years ago. Nothing's happened since. So what we were proposed is that you have a public hearing. Very simple. You hear from the public, and it's not open-ended. You've got about a half a dozen subjects. For example, should you allow double-pane windows in historic districts? And if so, what kind, and under what circumstances? Should you have siding that is flame resistant, fire resistant, fire retardant? And if so, if it's long, is it consistent with the appearance of what it would replace? Because we've got conflicting standards, or at least standards that can be reconciled. One, we want to preserve historic figures, characteristics and traits, but at the same time, we also want to be energy efficient, and we want to keep those costs down and be fire resistant. Why kick it down the road another year? It doesn't take that long. So how long does it take to write up a one-page announcement and then have the staff or have the committee, the commission, come up with a series of questions to examine? You have that as structure. You already gave us a mandate 10 years or more ago. So all we're proposing is you do it. After all, Pierre Avaz, as mayor of the city many years ago, we understand, with a contentious issue, heard people all the way to the midnight to hear from every single person, because that's why we're representatives of the public. We want to hear from them. We can make recommendations based on the studies that we've been doing, looking at all kinds of proposals and standards that are used in other communities, but we want to hear from the public, because whatever we propose now can be changed based on what we hear. And whatever we produce, it's going to have much more respect if we hear from the public. I cannot understand why we're kicking it down the road any further. That's the essence.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, staff. Now, my apologies to Planning Commissioner Smith, if I heard him wrong, but I came back with the impression that he was stating that the memorandum that's before you from the Planning Commission was modified by staff, and that is not the case. So the memorandum was, there was basically, the special committee was formed to prepare this memorandum. And so it went before the full Planning Commission many times, and was revised by the full commission until what's before you was adopted by the full Planning Commission. And so staff merely formatted the memorandum, you know, as clerical staff, for the Planning Commission. And so I want to rest assured that staff did not modify that memorandum that is before you in terms of any substantive content.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Ryan Carter speaking tonight only as a member of the public and in no official capacity. So thank you for taking the time to look at this tonight. It was a labor of love for almost two years. And the goal of this whole thing was to try and spur some movement in the city towards historic preservation. Every two years during the election, we get promises from the candidates, including this election, all three of the candidates are running on a platform of historic preservation. And honestly, with the exception of the joint meeting that the Planning Commission had with the city council, I see very little of that happening from that dais. So hopefully, moving forward, I would love to see some more action on historic preservation, utilizing possibly some of the recommendations that we put before you from the Planning Commission. Let's get some movement on this issue. Citizens are frustrated. Businesses are frustrated. Property owners are frustrated. And we really need to get some forward progress on this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. City Council, Mayor Nell. I'm Chris Keeney, and I am currently the Chair of the Planning Commission. And I will speak from that perspective, in addition to being a citizen of Platteville and concerned about these historic preservation issues. And Mr. Rivas, you very clearly stated for the council that the memo that was included in your packet for tonight's agenda is simply a reformatting of the information that the Planning Commission reviewed and approved at a prior meeting. And so there were no changes made. And so that memo reflects the advice that we are sending for your consideration. And that is our directive under the Historic Preservation Ordinance. When the Historic Advisory Committee was dissolved, the authority transferred to Planning Commission. So that's simply what we're doing. We, the special committee was formed. Commissioner Carter and Commissioner Smith were on it. They did present a memo, which was revised several times based on our conversations at the Planning Commission. And so using that, as well as the experience of all the commissioners, the information that we gained from that workshop that was held in the summer of 2023, if I have the date correct, we took all of that and summarized that for your consideration in that memo. So it's, you know, up to you to decide what priorities you think are most important for the city. And then we look forward to hearing back from you on what steps you would like the Planning Commission to take, so that we can make some more progress on this issue. And of course, I'm available to answer any questions you've got, but I think Mr. Rivas has a fantastic working knowledge of this, and he can certainly answer any questions you've got. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we only have two more members. Come on up.
You're not compelled or obligated to say anything.
Okay, we will bring this back to the council and close public comment. This is a lengthy memo. Does anyone want to start? Otherwise, I have a whole lot of thoughts, too. All right, I will, I will, I will start and give a-
Salt the line.
Well, it was a lot to absorb, and I read it several times, just trying to figure out how we would frame this conversation. And, you know, first of all, I just, I felt like there was a little bit of a disconnect from the direction of this council to the work the subcommittee had been doing in the Planning Commission. And it's perhaps possible they got started and looked at the breadth of everything and got overwhelmed, and then, you know, that's what it kind of looks like to me, because there's an awful lot here. But I want to go back to our sequence of, starting with, we had August of 2023, we had our joint council planning commission staff community workshop. And I thought in that workshop that what we learned was the SOI doesn't need to be applied as strictly as the city had been doing, and there is a lot more flexibility in that. In October of 2023, there was an appeal to the Planning Commission decision. We heard from a city council member who was part of that establishment of the historic districts, and we learned it was not the intent of those councils to include every single house in the district, but really to focus on preserving those historic homes in the district. And, you know, we all talked about that and gave direction as a city council. And I guess I thought that the special committees would be building on these meetings and this momentum moving forward. I thought that they would be focusing on our most common items like windows and siding for historic homes, and present a proposal about how to apply the SOI for what makes sense in our community. And I, that's what I kind of thought we would be getting tonight. So I just wanted to let you know that's kind of where I was. But we do have a proposal, and I do think we need to respond. So I'm going to take them by recommendation and give you-
Before you get in, can I just say?
Yeah.
I think your evaluation of the workshop and what I was thinking when I left, at least match up to what I was thinking when I left the workshop, that we were, we were looking to better focus the efforts of, in terms of historic preservation, in order to not make somebody who bought a 1950s bungalow that happened to fit in, that happened to be within the allies, have to go through all these steps. And, and, I mean, I'm a little disappointed that what came back was basically, I mean, I've seen this, I haven't seen this memo before, but I've seen memos like it in this discussion before around this subject. There is one thing I would like to say, though, in defense of our staff. I believe that the reason that the term in the thing is, oh, Jesus, what page is it on? I'm not even close now. This is what happens. Resolution 7896, Establishment of the Historical Advisory Committee is because-
is because that's what that resolution is titled. So when you, I think that was what the comment was about. And the idea that we're not trying to establish that, well, no. But that's what the title of that resolution was, 7896. It was in the title, Establishment of Historic... You were just referring back to that resolution, correct? Okay, thank you. So that was that. Anyway, yeah, I'm, I don't, you know, good for you guys. You went out and did a bunch of work. That's fantastic. There's nothing wrong with that. And this is an important subject in town. But I do feel like, like I said, I agree with you. I think that what this says to me doesn't really match up to what I was, left when I left. And maybe it's our fault we didn't give better direction. I'll even take that on. We didn't give good enough direction, or at least I didn't. I don't want to speak for...
Okay. Yeah, no, and that's what tonight's about. We can, we can be more specific and help focus things and, and whatever. So I thought I'd go through one by one and just tell you kind of my thoughts on each of the recommendations. So we had recommendation one. There are kind of four things in there, updating the website. I'm willing to take this on, just to make sure, go through the website. You know, these are, these are easy things that someone can do, and I'm willing to do it. Informational flyers, we can send those in the water bill. I'll take on drafting up a flyer. That, that's another easy win for that one. The signage for entryways to each district. Well, now, this is a funding request, and it's a funding request for design, location, products, public outreach, installation. This is a job for a nonprofit. As Mr. Smith stated earlier, we have a lot of nonprofits that get stuff done in this, this town. And, you know, I think that's where that should get started and moved. There's a lot of great things happening out there. The workshops, this is another funding request. But it doesn't appear to me that we have all the information to move forward with those workshops at this time. And I'll kind of get to that as I go through what, you know. All right, so when we look at regarding recommendation two, and that is the historic district inventory. Now, I want to recall last year, I think it was October 31st, Mr. Smith and Mr. Carter came to the council and asked for $56,200 for their nonprofit, the Heritage Association of Eldorado County, to update the historical resource inventory. I think that was like a six-page proposal. And at the time, the council asked them what the grants that they had applied for and what partnerships had been sought to cover those costs. And they said they didn't, they hadn't at that time. Also, their 501(c)(3) was not in good standing with the state at that time, and they needed to resolve that. We have a historical inventory. It may not be perfect, but we have one. And I don't think that the update is the highest priority for the city. However, I do support the Heritage Association taking this on as they requested and finding the funds to support it like they did originally. This is like, you know, like Mr. Smith said, the nonprofits can get an awful lot of work done. And I think that's where that recommendation should go. Recommendation three, consider revising a current or adopting a new historic district ordinance. Okay, I want to put a pin in that because I think the outcomes of recommendation four will guide and drive the recommendations for three. So recommendations for four, as stated earlier, the SOI has flexibility. And one of our planning commissioners, Chris Keeney, has already taken quite a few of those SOI trainings that they're able to take online. And so I'd like to see that commissioner choose another commissioner and do their subcommittee and bring back recommendations to the Planning Commission for how to apply the SOI or other appropriate standards to our historic homes with a particular focus on windows, siding, decking, and any other most requested items, you know, as selected by staff. And that this should be our highest priority as it actively serves the residents' needs. I mean, those are the things we're going to get requests for. Those are the, the information that the residents need. We need to focus on our most requested items and start getting answers for that. So to be clear, I'm looking for an interim workable document that addresses standards on historic homes in historic districts. And this can be done by looking at the flexibility, excuse me, invariances in the SOI and/or looking at the historic standard documents in other communities. I know that they've brought those up, that I think there's Woodland and there's Grass Valley. We've already gone and done all those things. And, you know, you can look at those, we don't have to recreate the wheel. We can look at, see what applies, what's similar, what's not similar in our communities, and make, and determine what's, what's best for our community. And so I think that's the next step in which, you know, we need the Planning Commission to work. So I think we need to give clear direction to the Planning Commission, that their role as the Historic Advisory Committee is in relation to reviewing alterations, permits, and projects presented to them. I watched that city council meeting from 2015 when they suspended the Historical Advisory Committee, and that's really what that meeting was focused on. You know, the recommendations that the Historical Advisory Committee had been making to the Planning Commission. And it wasn't necessarily trying to take on all these other things that nonprofits had done before. And frankly, you know, with a budget like ours, we're going to need the help and partnership of nonprofits to continue. We don't have the staff and the money to, to take all that on. So the SOI has flexibility, and I just think we need to apply that. We have nonprofits we depend on to get a lot of the work done around the city, and this is no exception. Mr. Smith brought it up earlier. We need to look at those people and let them do the good work they do. Nonprofits can help further the inventory work, recommendation two. I also want to recognize that the city is putting efforts into historic preservation. We often, by a couple people here, this statement. And I want to point out that we've put $200,000 towards saving the confidence in immigrant Jane buildings. We've supported programs such as Save the Graves, the Chambers Miners on Main program, and the History of Main Street Productions with the Community Access. We've put money towards reviving the Snowshoe Thompson mural and bringing lighting to the Snowshoe Thompson monument at the West End of Town. So, you know, when I look at that $200,000 we've put towards those buildings, you know, we're, we're doing a lot towards historic preservation. We can't do everything all at once. And we are taking these other smaller steps to, to support things all around our town. And with that, that's what I have to say.
We're done. No, thank you, Mayor. I think that's a great baseline setup for us to have a discussion and to go through some of these.
Can I, do you have something?
No, I was just gonna, you know, I, I watched the Planning Commission meeting twice.
Yes.
And I told Chris this, and I, I felt less informed after the second time I read it because it was, and it wasn't because, you know, not for the lack of effort on all of our planning commissioners, but really because it was just hard to follow because, and you had, there was renumbering of things. And if you didn't have paperwork in front of you, it was sort of confusing. So, I mean, to me, the, the order that any of these things came over were sort of irrelevant. I mean, because they're all items on a paper, right? So they're all important. Otherwise, they wouldn't be on the, on the paper that they came over on. I do think, though, that, and this goes back to that original meeting, but even from my experience, I mean, I'm the only one here in this room that was Historical Advisory Commission member, a planning commissioner, and now a city council member. So I have sort of at least a, almost a full history on this item from the creation of the Historical Advisory Commission. And, you know, back then, really the only item we were charged with outside of reviewing items that, you know, whether they were windows or inside... Yeah, windows and siding, for the most part. You know, when those items came forward, the only other big item that we were, that we were tasked with and that we looked at was the creation of a downtown district. And, you know, we spent some time working on that through the life of the committee. And it's true, I mean, if you look back on it, and even for myself, it became onerous because we were doing like triple duty. We were going to Planning Commission, and then from Planning Commission, we were also going to city council to give like the perspective of the Historical Advisory Commission. And it became like a lot of work, more than I anticipated when I first interviewed for the position. And I think, you know, over time, that just sort of weighed in on some people, especially after we kind of came up with what we thought a historic district was, was, what it was going to look like. That was like the main meat. And then, and then we just had these come up as individual projects to us. And I started to feel bad for the applicants as well because it was just, it was purely repetitive because we were advisory. So advisory is exactly what it sounds like, right? It's advisory. And so you still had to go to Planning Commission. And so you were, you were, you were jumping through this twice. And then potentially to city council as well if you didn't like the outcome or, you know, if somebody appealed, whatever. So I think there were some duplicative measures in there as well, just from a procedure standpoint for the individual applicants. So I do actually like the idea of having Planning Commission assume these roles because it's just more efficient. The Historical Advisory Committee, it was just an extra layer for, for the most part. Unless you wanted to just task it to look at some, like some individual things, like peak, where we'd have them go out and they look at individual items, and they come back with reports to us to say, here's what we think. We took a lot of time and effort to look at it. But just as a reviewing mechanism, it probably doesn't serve, you know, the function that it needed to do. It's been a long time now. I mean, these issues, as we've all said, have, you know, we've been talking about these for probably decades before, you know, even any of our time on this. I'm less concerned with, you know, what a, which one is it here? Consider revising the current or adopting a new historic district ordinance. I know we had some brief discussion about this at a joint meeting about like, well, why did, how did we build them? Why did we build them? And does anyone even know like what's in them? You know, we would get more questions about that if that was like something that was really on the top of everybody's mind. But we do get a lot of questions because we do have applicants for, coming before Planning Commission on items that are directly related to the SOI. So we had, just for some reference, we had three in 2022, nine in 2023, so a lot in 2023, and five so far to date this year. So, you know, there's enough of those that are coming forward. Some consistency in the rules and how we apply them make a lot of sense because, you know, we've been, we have been consistent, and that's been inconsistent. And that's, that's basically what we've been over the years on, on these issues. And so we do, I think we do have a duty to our constituents, to building owners and to others, to provide them with a clear path when they're dealing with some of these issues. And as Mr. Smith mentioned in his comments, like my position has involved someone on this too because when I first started this, I didn't think Plascherville might burn down. And so the idea that, you know, you know, fire-retarded materials and, you know, windows that maybe are better in a fire, things like that, weren't really something that I was thinking. I was thinking, you know, it has to look exactly the same or, you know, if we're really going to apply the SOI standards. Well, my, my thoughts changed on that because I think our environment's changed. And so it's hard to say you're going to have these strict protocols when things could potentially save a house, save a life, those types of things, especially if they look the same. So I, I do think, you know, there's probably projects that came to us that I would look differently on today than I did 10 years ago or longer in this case. So I do think we need to give some clarification there. What I'd like to see is to have, whether it's the special committee of Planning Commission or the committee as a whole, bring back some, you know, do the actual meeting. So not do a fifth Tuesday or something else, but we can do this within, you know, two or three Planning Commission meetings where we're bringing issues to the public. We make sure they're very well-publicized and ask these questions. You know, is it siding? Is it window material? Is it different things? Let's start getting a baseline put in place. There are some materials that are out there. You know, I'm willing to look at the budget when it comes next year to see if there's something that's missing. But some of those things can be done. We know those materials are out there, and we can kind of get some of those things in place. So I'd love to see that as that first step forward so that we can get that in place, hopefully by maybe first quarter of, or even maybe, well, maybe second quarter of 2025, but relatively soon so that we do, so as we have projects coming forward, there is some certainty about what to be done. And, and that gives certainty, and that gives some guidance to Planning Commission as well that we could adopt those into our regulations going forward. The inventory list, that's, that was, been a pet project of mine. And you all, some of you gave, you know, we put $10,000 into the budget for that. We ended up using it to do the joint meeting and to do some initial work on it. And so I still believe in doing that and updating it because it was never complete. However, to the mayor's point, we are going to need outside help. I mean, the reality, there's just, I mean, I'm going to pick a police officer every day of the week and twice on Sunday when it comes to extra funds or paving a road because quite frankly, that's what, that's the highest and best use of those funds. And so I want to protect all these things. I want to update the inventory. But we're going to probably need some outside help. And so that means other organizations working with us. We can be the fiscal body, you know, we can help with those. I think staff is certainly willing and able to do that. But we're going to need outside organizations. I'm willing to go to every meeting, you know, with people to go ask for money, you know, and to say, hey, this is really important for the city of Plascherville. But we're going to need outside friends. There's just, the general fund is not going to be able to do probably $150,000 that it's going to take in order to do something like this. It's possible we could do some, and we'll, you know, we had, but the current budget doesn't look like it's going to be, in any way, be able to do that. So we're going to have to look at alternative ways of, of doing that. And then, yeah, like, I, I think it's so far down the road on redoing a historic district, like what that would look like. That, to me, has never really risen to like a high level of priority for myself, even though I do think I'd like to see, you know, as I've always, I'd like to have a historic district downtown because I think we sort of have one by de facto anyways because of the 500-feet rule that apply to buildings that are next to historic assets or structures. It's just a matter of applying that more stringently going forward. So to me, it's not that much difference if we actually did it. But we still need to go through the motions of, not the motions, but the process so that people can be informed and understand what they need to do. So those are my initial comments, I think. There'll be more, but I, that's what I could thought of so far.
Well, thank you. But I always talk, do you have something? You don't have to say anything. Okay, never mind. I'll, you can get primed while I'm over here. Yes, okay. First things, the, it is important. Now, that was, it was a few years ago that the, a decade ago probably, that the Historic Advisory Committee was put on hiatus. But everybody needs to remember, we did that. I was on the council when that happened. We did it because we literally could not get enough people to apply for the committee. Okay? You know, I understand, this is a beautiful place. It has a lot of history. I think there's this idea that there's this burning, burning thing about historical and histrioncy stuff in this town that does flare up every once in a while when a specific kind of thing comes along. But overall, like I said, we could not get, he will tell you, he was there. We could not get, we had three people on it, I think, when it went dormant, and of a seven, seven-person?
No, I think it was five.
No, I think you're right. It was a seven-person committee. We had three people. We could not beg, borrow, or steal four people to be on it. That, that, that request was open for months and months. It was open forever. It just was always open. So, you know, whenever we talk about the, the histrioncy thing here, we, I think we need to understand that, yes, it's important. For some people, it's very important. But for a lot of people, it's just like, yeah, I would rather have an extra cop or make sure there's no potholes on my street. I take umbrage with the idea that the history of this town isn't protected. It's not just us. There's all sorts of people. Most of them own property in town. They understand what they have sometimes. I have not, I can think of two. One of them predates, I think, when the, when the brewery was torn down, when Joe Stancil went and got the, the grading or the demo permit on the brewery up there on Upper Main Street. That was torn down to make a parking lot. And maybe when the Stagecoach shopping thing there on the corner of Broadway and, and they took out Blair lumber, and there was a wall that had been built by, I don't know, Chileans or something like that. But there, you know, you can count on one hand and probably be missing fingers to point to a specific thing where the history of this town has been compromised by any action of this body or the government. Oh, and the shack on Cedar Ravine that got torn down, that was falling down. The history of the town has been preserved in the 40-plus years I've lived here. It hasn't changed much. It looks the same. People have made improvements. No one's turned anything on Main Street into a chromed glass, you know, palace or anything like that. We need to be more specific in how we apply the rules that apply to the homes that are in the historic districts currently. I had the privilege of putting two vinyl windows in my house over on Myrtle, which is, parts of it are at least 100 years old. And the part that I was putting the windows into are about 90 years old. If you sat on Myrtle Avenue and looked at my adorable house and you looked at it, you'd say, wow, what a beautiful example of... you'd say, wow, what a beautiful example of craftsman-type style. It's symmetrical. And there's one, one feature that screams 90s on the front and that's it, when we did our addition. You'd say, what a beautiful home. Look at that shiplapped siding. Look at those beautiful windows with all the crosses and the stuff in them, the grids. And you'd be looking at masonite on one side, aluminum on the other side, because that's what the siding is right now. And at least three windows that are vinyl and the rest of them are dual-pane aluminum windows. But from the street, you wouldn't know it. You'd say, what a beautiful little cute, God, that's a, I want to own that house. I think a lot of what we need to do is start thinking about what historical preservation is. For some people, it's branch and root. You, everything, you make sure that that doesn't change. And for other people, it's walking down the street and looking at a house and going, wow, that's, that's really cool. I would be, I would like for the folks on the subcommittee to come back with very practical, applicable guidelines. Somebody comes in with a window, yeah, you can put this window in there. We go through this window thing every time somebody wants to put a window in or siding. Come back and say, this kind of thing works. Look and feel. How does it look from the street? Are you compromising the visual components of it? This is just my personal feeling about it. I guess, I thought we had been clear at the workshop, but apparently not as much as we should have been, and that's our fault. But I think that's what we need to start doing. And I will do this. You get 80% of the property owners on Main Street, property owners, not the, not the merchants, unless the merchants own the building, you get 80% of the property owners on Main Street to sign a letter that says they're willing to create a historic district on Main Street and I'll support it. But if it's 50 plus one, no one's going to die on that hill because I've been around when those arguments have been had. And I'm not going to go up against the property owners. So that's my, my suggestions and my requirements for moving forward. I would like to see very specific things and then what structures are in and what structures are out. I was going to go up Cedar Ravine and do my own inventory and it was basically going to be yes and no. Yes, 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 no, no, yes, no, yeah. Totally subjective. I think we need to fine tune the districts. And I think we need to be very specific about look and feel and what we will let people put in their homes. I think if we do that, we'll tone down some of what goes back and forth with the planning commissioner. Because I can understand being frustrated by it.
So I guess I would also say, I mean, obviously I have concerns about staff time and budget and prioritization of resources. I do think the wildfire safety component of this is a prioritization in me, my mind in terms of, you know, allowing, looking at ways to allow people to put more safe materials into their homes if they are in historic districts in a way that doesn't compromise the aesthetics, but does make their house safer. So I do think that's an important thing I'd like to see our commission or subcommittee of commission look at. I'd also like to see, like, I think we had this discussion during the workshop, but, you know, can we say, for example, any house built after 1950, we're not going to apply SOI to? And just make, whether that's the right year or 1940 or whatever, to make it a little bit more clear, both for the property owners, if they happen to fall in a historic district, but they have a more modern house, you know, that this will not be applied to them. So I do, I would like to see something like that. I don't know what the right year is. But I think, you know, when you look at SOI, it says 50 years, which would mean we're trying to preserve 1970s homes, which I don't think any of us think is like the appropriate thing to be doing. So. And, and I agree with what my fellow commissioners said. I mean, I think I would like to see our council members. Sorry, I know. I mean, that was, that was, that was the thing that we saw on the commission when I was on. There was a lot of windows. There was a lot of siding. And I was a person who felt as a commissioner, my job was to look at this and I was like, well, this is what our ordinance says. And whether I agree with it or not, I'm trying to make a decision based on what it says. Do I think it complies or not? So I would like to see something that for both the property owners and for the commission is a little bit more clear about this strict adherence doesn't apply in these circumstances or it doesn't apply if you're a recent, you know, you're a more modern house, but you fall in a district. Or if you're talking about windows, we allow these other things. Or if you're talking about siding, we allow these other things. So that's my thought process.
Yeah, I like that. And same, I mean, that was, and I would say during my era on planning commission, we never, we never said no to somebody putting in vinyl windows into a house. It was to the point, I don't know if Pierre will remember this, but I actually said, well, if all we're doing is just saying yes to all these, we should just make this a plan check item. And why even waste people's time coming to a planning commission if, if we're just going to say yes to all vinyl windows anyways? I got voted down, I think, four to one on that, but they wanted to retain it. But I was like, you know, why waste people's time if we're just going to say yes? But, you know, I guess we were being consistent from that standpoint, but then it kind of swung the other way. Even to this, you know, as items came to this, to this committee, I mean, to plan, to city council, maybe a year ago, where we had a house where I think we made them put in wood windows. And so, you know, like I said, I think we've been consistently inconsistent over the years. And, and we, we need to end that so that people do have some ability to have a pretty good sense of what they're getting into. And I agree, I like the idea of having like a date. I think there could be some off-ramps like, you know, Frank Lloyd Wright or, you know, some other contemporary person that did something really cool that is known. You know, of course, we'd want to preserve that for, you know, in perpetuity and ensure that that type of building was, you know, was, was adequately recognized and preserved. But you're right, not everything that's old is necessarily historic. Some things are just older. And so we should give some, some deference to that and, you know, give people a little bit easier path to do things. And I think that's still a work in progress because I'd want to hear from people and, you know, and see what, you know, came back through planning commission. We know with those types of things. I think that's a perfect venue. I mean, we have two meetings a month, you know, and we cancel a lot of planning commission meetings sometimes for, for lack of issues. To me, that's a great venue to be able to have these and have people come out. And any of us can sit in the audience and just listen to what, you know, what's going on there. So.
Okay. So there's a few things that kind of jump out at me throughout this little report here. And they all kind of lead in the same thing and we're all kind of going the same place here. The biggest one, obviously, has been our experience that strict application of the SOI standards does not routinely align with the needs of Placerville residents, nor its needs to preserve the integrity of the districts and is therefore not an adequate fit to our local conditions. Okay, which basically means that we're finding things that are definitely changing, not only with our environment, but with people that are living in the historical districts. I do know personally that my district, and this is going to kind of jump back to what year are we going to do this on? My house was built in 1936. It was finalized in 1957.
Wow.
So where do you start?
The Sagrada of Placerville.
So, and, and I did a lot of this research, honestly, before I bought this, before I bought the house and before I jumped into all of this. So, and, and I also researched multiple houses around my area because I wanted to know what is a historical district and what am I getting myself into? Because as somebody who worked in construction for almost 30 years, I've worked on a historical home. And when you got to match grains of wood, it gets really expensive really fast. Okay? And unfortunately, most of the people that live in these historic districts don't have that kind of money. But on top of that, you know, finding some of the homes that I do have, some of the homes were still built in 1936. I'm sorry, there, there weren't stucco in 1936. And there are now stucco homes. So we got a lot of changes in some of these historical districts, which jumps me down to one of the other things that jumps out. It says identify contributing and non-contributing buildings within a district. I definitely think that is one of the things we need to be able to do. Now, I don't know if that's knocking on a door and asking the person, hey, are you willing to contribute? But if it's an obvious historical building and there's some sort of record to it within the city of Placerville, it states it is a historical building, that might be a different story. I don't know how deep that would have to go or what we'd have to do to figure that out. But that could be something we might have to take a look at. But the biggest thing that actually sticks out to me on this is establishing clear guidelines for property owners. Period. That's where we've got to go with all of this. Whether you're in a historic district or not, because I know even when I go look at some of this stuff, I mean, you got to look at the SOI standards and it's a, yeah, you can get lost. It's, it's worse than a corn maze at Halloween. So I think basically what we need to do is just break it down to the simplest way possible. Obviously, we all know that the things that we get are going to be, well, and I, I think I've heard roofing has been another issue too for some of this stuff. So, because I mean, it, you know, depending on the building and how old it is and, you know, I mean, I've got a neighbor who's still, actually up until five years ago, still had shake roof on his house. So, but he also has one of the historical buildings in the neighborhood. And even he tells me of stories of things that he's tried to do back years ago and went in front of the planning commission and said, no, you can't do that. But today, I think the planning commission would say something different. So obviously, it all changes. So getting, you know, basically getting back to the needs of, of what the people need inside the historic districts, identifying them, giving them clear guidelines and basically giving the planning commission, you know, the opportunity to establish those clear guidelines. So it's not as confusing to them on what they can and can't do from one person to the next, depending on what building they live in, in that historic district. So I think that's kind of where we need to go. I mean, I agree with the rest of you. There's a lot of stuff involved in all of this. But I think we need to get it down. Just like Mr. Smith said, we, we got to break it down to simpler things to start with and go from there and build on that.
Staff, do you think that direction is clear?
I think what was clear is some of the priorities that you distilled from memo that was before you. One point I do want to make, and that's in regards to the proposal to create a downtown historic district. So that was moving forward because that's a policy direction in our adopted general plan. So if that's something that the city sees it'll never do, we probably should sometime in the future eliminate that from our general plan. And I think that's the reason why we went through the extensive work of actually establishing that boundary, which is now to be bound for the planning commission that would, you know, to approve those boundaries. And then come to the city council for adoption to create yet this fifth commercial downtown historic district. But if it's something that council has no interest in, we really should amend our general plan and eliminate that. Because it'll always be back there, you know, hitting up on us.
Yeah, it was like our peak, it was like our, our peak activity that was given to us to, to look at.
Right, it was, yeah. I remember the hack going through that for quite some time, till we finally got it approved. So that, that's where it stands. So it's just waiting to go to the planning commission. But maybe we, we'll, we'll just table that until there's some decision, maybe for the council. We can bring an item to quickly amend the general plan and remove that if that's your direction. But we can do that.
That would not be my position, but.
Yeah, I don't, I. So, but it's something just to consider. The other thing is, is as far as doing the inventory, that's something that's going to require expertise. So it's not a layperson going out there and knocking on the door and just looking at the house. It's going to take an expert to really look at the house, determine what modification has been done. I think the idea of creating a year is a good one, notwithstanding a night, you know, maybe a more modern home that was built by a famous architect. But I look at it like, when you look at these homes, it's, it's sort of like an old vehicle. If it's factory stock from Detroit, it's probably worth a heck of a lot more money than if a previous owner maybe modified the tires or the exhaust or did something to the motor. All of a sudden, the value goes way down. It's the same thing with the integrity of an historic house. And so there's that need to look at some of these houses. How much have they been modified? So if they've been modified to the extent that there's nothing really there to preserve anymore other than looking at the aesthetics, that it's not taking away from, you know, the aesthetics of the historic district. Somebody driving through at 25 miles an hour is still going to think I'm in a historic neighborhood. I think the whole idea of considering the wildland urban interface as far as fires is a really good one as well. Because I think, you know, I, I serve a lot and work a lot with the county and we're looking at revising our hazardous vegetation ordinance. And I don't know, it's kind of scary when I still look at properties where you see a fire coming through. It can be a real detriment to the structures that are within these areas. The entire city's in a wild, wildland fire, high fire hazard area. So let's see, what else did I want to cover there? I think I covered most of it. But I think also that when you're looking at how, you know, where you raise that bar in terms of applying the Secretary Interior standards, I think the, the bar is set real high if that structure is on the state or a federal historic register. You know, that's where we're really looking at, you know, the highest bar. Where if it's wood windows, well, we want those wooden windows to remain wood. Repair it first and then replace with, you know, same kind as opposed to going to vinyl. You're not going to, you're not going to allow that on something that's in, in historic register, where a lot of the, most of the buildings are not. So I think unless there's any other questions you'd like for me to weigh in on, that would be just my just general comments on what your discussion is.
Yeah, no, no, I completely agree with you. I mean, you know, yeah, obviously if it's on historic register, we're going to want to keep it there. And, you know, so Mike, it's all you, buddy.
Yeah, we don't ever want those.
That's why my windows leak like sivv.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I bought my house. It's got three different types of windows, three different types of siding. You can tell where it's, you know, the tires have been changed and the exhaust has been crunched. So, you know, yeah, but with that kind of stuff, yeah, I completely understand it. When it comes to the historic district for downtown, I completely agree with Councilman Clarici on the fact that you get all the property owners to agree to do that, then you bet you. Because the last thing I want to do, and I think Nicole and I have the same agreement on this, is force something on property owners. Because it's their property, you know? So, I mean, I, I would love it if, you know, downtown Placerville would stay absolutely historic and, and everybody decides that that's a great thing to do and they're going to do that anyway. But trying to force it on property owners, especially absentee property owners, that's going to be quite the challenge.
And I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't want to take that out of the general plan language. I am not against a historic district from Main Street. I'm not against it. I've just seen what you have to go through, even when you talk about it. And I don't think that it's the highest and best use for the city staff or even our time or certainly the planning commission's time to be at the forefront of that. But if some very concerned citizens want to go out and rally those troops and get that together, God bless them, they can go do that. I'd also like to, yeah, I'd also like to thank the subcommittee people. This has been like the best discussion I think we've had about this in a while. And it's because you guys went out and did this memo and the planning commissioners, you know, informing this memo. It got us to finally kind of talk about stuff and put some things on the table, I guess more clearly.
Yeah, I would also say, I, I don't necessarily feel like we need to take it out of the general plan, but I would not prioritize it unless a group of property owners were advocating for it to move forward and be a priority. Like that's where I would want to see the, the people who own the properties coming to us and saying, this is a priority for us. We want this to be, and like, as you said, 80-plus percent, not just a slight majority.
50 plus one.
Yeah. That say like, this is what we want for our buildings that we own. Because, yeah, you guys all know at this point, I don't like, I'm, I'm a free market economy. People should be free to do what they want in their businesses and, yeah, don't want to put restrictions on property owners unless the property owners themselves are asking for that because they see a benefit to it.
Okay.
So what it adds is clear as mud, Pierre?
I guess from staff's perspective, we're looking at timing. So we were looking at maybe this, this thing being tabled until either mid-year or more preferably the next budget. Because right now, we're, we are, we're seriously understaffed. We're working overtime and we're not going to work additional overtime.
Yeah, I mean, I think except, I mean, my expectation, and certainly it's just myself, but I was hoping we can move quicker on trying to get planning commission to start looking at these items on the SOI so we could give people more clarity sooner. The other things are much bigger items, but I think that one to me seems like a doable work product for our, either for the ad hoc committee, or not ad hoc, the standing committee, whatever it's called, or the, or the, or the body as a whole. That would be my, that would be my preference.
I, I'm not going to speak for Pierre, but I think we can allow the planning commission to go back and take on specifically that one item, especially. I know that, you know, we've talked about item number one on your recommendation number one. I don't think these are necessarily in order. But some things that can be done to the website and those are, those are easy. Those are the low-hanging fruit that we can, with, you know, suggestions from the mayor and/or perhaps planning commissioners, things that we can do better on our website, those.
those can, those can be done, and those are easy changes to make. And then if the commission or subcommittee wants to work on, you know, coming up with a plan for implementing the SOI, um, yeah, they, they can work on that and bring something forward to staff. Uh, doesn't require staff to do a lot of work, let them work on it, and bring something back to the commission to review and, and kind of reduce staff time in that manner, so.
I think that makes sense, because I, I mean, I was even thinking of the mailers, because, you know, in some, and I don't know if this is for every district, but certainly the district that I'm in, not every house actually would fall within the parameters of the historical district review. I mean, you have newer houses, you have manufactured homes, you have different things, so you could actually confuse people more by saying them a letter saying, you're in a historic district, it is what you have to do. Well, I live in a manufactured home, so, you know, so I, I think, you know, there's got to be some thought process behind that as well. It's, it's, it always seems like it's an easy thing, but it's not, and, you know, that's why these things take time.
Yeah, I would agree. I think allowing our planning commission to have, whether it's in their special committee or it is in their, just all five of them, having it as agenda items in their meeting, like one item, maybe they talk about, uh, what they want to do for what we said, like age that they want to apply this to. Maybe one, they talk about what do we want to allow for windows, one, they talk about what do we want to allow for siding, some of the very common things that come before them, and then make a recommendation, you know, come to a consensus among themselves and make a recommendation back to us that, you know, we think we should allow vinyl windows, or not, or we think, you know, all except for on the historical registry or inventory list should be allowed to do these things, but if they're on that list, they shouldn't be allowed to do it, et cetera, and have some specifics behind, you know, what a recommendation would be, and then allow that to move forward, because it is very confusing, like you said, like, okay, I'm in a manufactured home, but I'm in a historic district, like, what applies to me, what doesn't apply to me? And similarly, like I said, we had items before us, I think we had like a nineteen fifties house, and I struggled with that, because I'm like, well, should we be applying this to a nineteen fifties house? I don't know, maybe it's a ranch-style home, like, is that something worth preserving or not?
And that's an interesting conundrum, because at least if you have an old enough home, you might still find wooden windows with ropes and weights, you know, because they were building those in the houses in the thirties, even into the forties, but you start getting into the middle, and certainly by the end of the fifties, you are now seeing aluminum-clad, single-pane glass. There is no way for you to actually replace that with a modern alternative, because it does not exist.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, so there's just these practicality issues that come out. There's siding out there that has asked, I, I didn't, I rented a house real early on in this town, and the siding was just really interesting, and it looked sort of like cedar shakes, except it was all asbestos, you know? And so, there's these weird things that come out, you know? There's some practical issues that, that are, that need to be, they need, and, and also, we're, he, we're not, you know, this is his la, no, your, your last meeting?
He did.
Your last me, oh my god, I'm going to cry. Anyway, um, we're about, we're hiring a new one of him, so we're talking, well, we're going to be talking about this when we have a transition to a new director. I mean, the nuts, the blocking and tackling stuff, I think, is a really good task, that SOI stuff, what do we want to apply, and who do we want to apply it to? And come back with something that makes sense. Yeah. Okay, okay, okay.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if perhaps Pierre and I could put together a memorandum of what your direction is you've given tonight?
That's good.
Would you like us to bring it back to you? Or are you comfortable with us saying, this is what the council wants the planning commission to do?
I'm comfortable. I'm comfortable.
Yeah, I think we're all pretty much in alignment on our direction, from what I hear. I don't.
I think we said the same things a lot of different ways, but we all pretty much said the same thing. I, I didn't hear any, any big variance that any of us had, so.
Barring something wildly, and, you know, different coming from staff, you know, we'd always would have the ability to pull that back, but I don't, I don't see that happening.
Okay. We'll do that.
Great.
We will move on to item thirteen. Council reports from other agency meetings. Eldorado Transit didn't meet, Transportation Commission didn't meet, LAFCO.
Didn't meet.
SECAG.
Uh, we met, uh, as I mentioned earlier, about the, the funding for, uh, Triptide Green, so very positive, uh, result for Eldorado County and the city of Placerville, uh, hopefully. I mean, it's not a guarantee, guarantee, but it's, it's, it's much better to be in, in the plan than not. Uh, and, uh, we just continue to move forward with, uh, planning for twenty-twenty-seven. So right now, we have to do a new MTP, Metropolitan Transportation Planning and Sustainable Community Strategy, SCS, by twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, that was because of AB three fifty that was passed last year. Uh, we went back and forth as to whether or not, uh, to try to push that out to twenty-twenty-nine or twenty-thirty-one through legislation, unfortunately, uh, not unfortunately, but the more we thought about it, the more we know, the more we knew that if we try to do legislation to extend ourselves out, especially on the housing side for the RENA numbers, we were going to run into all kinds of buzzsaws, which we almost did on AB three fifty the year before. And so, um, the idea going forward is we're going to work with the other three MPOs, so that would be SCAG, SandAG, and, uh, uh, the Bay Area.
A-Bag.
A-Bag, to, um, to come up, to, uh, work through a, uh, go back and try to reform SB three seventy-five. Uh, and, I mean, the world has changed since SB three seventy-five first passed, and when that came into being, uh, which, which created the SCS, the Sustainable Community Strategy that all, all municipalities have to. This isn't like we wanted, like, you don't have a choice, so. Uh, but it, but there's, um, there's a thought process, especially with the big MPOs being involved in this from the Bay Area and San Diego and Los Angeles, that we could actually maybe see some, uh, changes to SB three seventy-five. I'm a little less optimistic, because I think we're kind of locked in in this current governor, but I think it lays the foundation for the next governor. Whoever the next governor is, is going to have to actually deal with all the ramifications of twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-five, some of these things that have been put in place, and so they will have to be clear, it'll be clear and present for them, as well as that legislature. So we can lay the foundation, I think, today, as we get closer to some of those, uh, dates, uh, because things will have to change. Because I will tell you today that none, no, there's not one jurisdiction in California from any of those MPOs that are going to hit their greenhouse gas targets, and they're only going to get more, they're only going to get worse next year when carb read, readjustes them. So there will be a day of reckoning, and I think we're planning for it now. That's it.
Thank you. Pioneer Energy?
We meet on Thursday.
Okay. Placerville Fire Safe Council didn't meet, opportunity knocks.
Did not meet.
Okay, great. Fourteen, requests for future agenda items. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to fifteen, City Manager and Staff Reports. Receive and File September twenty twenty-four Police Report, Chief Ren. Nothing, okay. Fifteen point two, receive and file September Fire Station twenty-five Run Report, Chief Cordero. It's good, okay. Fifteen point three, Development Services.
No, this is, no, this is going to be the last one he ever does.
Department Development Permitting Statistics for the Month of September, Mr. Rivas.
Take your time, Mr. Rivas, just take your time.
Uh, staff doesn't have anything, um, additional to add to our report, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have on these, um, statistics.
Okay. Fifteen point one, two, and three, any questions from the council?[1760.91]